Are you waiting on me?
Brockton Community Access, do you want to?
I will make him co-host. Promote the panel list and then promote to, where to go? And then I will make him co-host so he can record. Where'd he go? There he is. Okay, Mr. Chairman, you can start your opening statement.
Good evening to everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Brockton Planning Board. This is February, Tuesday, February the 2nd, 2021. The time is 6:00 p.m. and I have a prepared statement that I am required to read, and it goes as follows. I am calling this February the 2nd, 2021, Meeting of the Brockton Planning Board to Order. My name is Bob Pelagi. I'm the Chair of the Board. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, relating to the 2020 Nobel Coronavirus Outbreak Emergency. The February the 2nd, 2021, public meeting of the Brockton Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the Planning Board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Chair via the question and answer function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. For those of you joining us by phone who want to ask a question, please press star nine to raise your hand. A copy of the recording and transcript will be posted to the city's webpage within 72 hours. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure count accuracy. At this time, I will conduct a quorum call. Board members, please respond in the affirmative to indicate your attendance at this meeting. Larry Hassan.
Here.
Tony Gonzalez.
Here.
Reggie Thomas.
Here.
Bob Pelagi is here. As I'm sure you're aware, we're now at least temporarily a four-man board. With four members voting in the affirmative, I declare we have a quorum. And our rather lengthy agenda is as follows. We have acceptance of minutes, endorsement of any A&R plans, subdivision plans into lot releases, a return of surety, that's what Chilton Wood subdivision, that's Ray for Mike Veronia, I guess. The first agenda item is zoning change. Basically, it's a fee increase for the, to research the buildability of lots. Second agenda item is site plan approval. Property is at 955 Belmont Street. Proposal is for a service station and convenience store, and Representative Attorney Danielle DuPaul, I believe. Number three is the site plan approval. Property is at 683 Belmont Street. Proposal is a used car lot. Representative J.K. Holmgren. Four is permission to return to the zoning vote of appeals. Property is at 68 to 70 Field Street. The denial was July the 14th of 2020. Marie Lorchette is represented by John Creedon. That item has been continued to match the second, 2021. Number five, permission to return to the zoning vote of appeals. Property at 598 North Main Street. The zoning denial was March the 12th of 2019. The applicant is Maria Flores. Six, permission to return to the zoning vote of appeals. Property is at 1 Millet Street. The denial was July the 28th of 2020. The applicant, it looks like it's early investments. Seven, definitive subdivision. Property is plot two, Belgravia Avenue. It's a four-lot residential subdivision. Representative Silver Engineering, that has been continued to match the second, 2021. Eight, property is a, it's a definitive subdivision. Property is on map 37, plots four, six, and 18, Augusta Avenue, and plot 36, Prospect Street. It's an 18-lot residential subdivision. That number seems to float a little bit. I'm not sure it's 18, but that's what it says. Owner representative is Frederick Kepshi, and the representative is Charlie Hansen. Number nine is preliminary subdivision. Property is at 42 Quincy Street. It's a five-lot. I believe now it's a, it's been reduced to what, four, Pam?
It is four, yes.
It's a four-lot residential subdivision. The owner representative is Springfield Ventures Realty Trust. Item 10, preliminary subdivision is property at 166 Davio Avenue. It's a two-lot residential subdivision. Owner representative is Christopher Mathers. 11 is a preliminary subdivision. The property is at plot 211 Rier, I guess. 203 and 207 Waverly Park Avenue. It's a seven-lot residential subdivision. The owner and representative is Hyacinth Everett Realty, and J.K. Holmer is the representative. And the last item, the 12th item is a preliminary subdivision. Property is at 76 South Street, a two-lot residential subdivision. That is Adeline LaRocque, I guess. It was Adeline LaRocque, and J.K. Holmer is representative, and you just learned that that has been continued. So.
To March 2nd.
I'm sorry?
Continue to March 2nd.
Continue to March 2nd, thank you. And I'll make the note. All right. So we're going to do our best to keep this at a reasonable time length, be as efficient as we can with each one of these agenda items. So the first order of business, we have a little administrative work to do, so we've got acceptance.
There are no minutes from that meeting we had two weeks ago, so.
All right, fine.
And the return of surety, we're still waiting for the final ass bill, so.
Okay, so we can move to item number one?
Yes.
Wow, look at us go. So the first agenda item is, number one is Section 2750, Appendix C, Article 7, buildable lot. So Mr. May, would you want to give us some background on that, please?
Good afternoon, or good evening. The building department and the city are requesting that we amend this section of the zoning code to increase the fees. The fee hasn't been increased in God knows how long. And because it's mentioned in the zoning ordinance and not in the rules and regulations, it does require it to come to the building, to the planning board for their non-binding recommendation to the ordinance committee, and then finally to the full board of city council for their final approval. And Pam, I don't have it in front of me, but do you know what the new fee will be?
It says.
$250, and that will also.
Thank you.
Because there are some title search, there's some title search work that needs to be done, and that will help pay for that work also.
So just for clarity, this is the fee that a landowner or prospective landowner would pay to the building department to have the law office research the buildability of a piece of property?
Correct.
Exactly. Am I stating that correctly? Okay.
Or an outside, or outside, an outside attorney.
Outside counsel.
Members, is there any deliberation, any comments on that?
No.
All right. Hearing none, would someone like to make a motion? I'm sorry?
Are there, it is a public hearing. We need to have.
Does this require public input?
Yes, sir. So if, if any of the attendees wish to speak on this matter, please raise your hands electronically. So at the bottom of your Zoom screen, you'll see an icon. If you press that, it says raise hands, or raise hand. I will unmute and allow you to provide testimony. And I do not see anyone with their hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. I thought, my bad, I thought this was just one of those items that needed just a endorsement from the planning board, but, okay, wonderful. So we don't have any input. Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve zoning.
Zoning fee.
Zoning change request.
Yep.
Recommending it favorably.
Motion to approve.
Our second motion?
All right, so a motion's been made and second, a vote on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Bob Pelagi's a yes. So. Second item is the site plan approval. That's property at 955 Belmont Street, Service Station Convenience Store. Representative Attorney Danielle DuPaul.
Danielle, is there anybody else with you?
Yes, thanks, Pam. Tonight with us from Colbia is Larry Coburn and Michael Gazdako, and from AU Engineering, Paul Sylvia and Rich Dufusco.
Okay, wait a minute.
Sorry.
Michael.
There's some other members from my colleague, John Russell, and.
Slow down, slow down, slow down. Michael Gazdako?
Gazdako. Gazdako.
Forgive me, Mike.
Thank you.
Richard Dufusco?
Dufusco, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And Danielle, who is going to be the spokesperson for your group, please?
I will be speaking on behalf of Colbia, Mr. Chair.
I think you mentioned four people. Who is the fourth?
Paul Sylvia, please.
Oh, there he is.
Got it? Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we ready, Mr. May?
We are ready.
All right, well Danielle, if you could give us just a brief outline of the project, we have a rather lengthy agenda tonight, so if you could give us a brief outline of the project, we'd appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. Danielle DuPaul from Adler Pollak &amp; Sheehan on behalf of the applicant, Colbia Enterprises LLC, for its site plan approval request for 955 Belmont Street. With us tonight, as we mentioned, is from Colbia, is Larry Coburn, who is the Chief Strategy Officer, and Michael Gazdako, who is the Director of Construction, and our engineers, Paul Sylvia from AU Engineering, and Rich Dufusco from AU Engineering. My colleague, John Russell, is on as well, in case I need moral support, which, you know, in COVID and Zoom times, we all need that, so I appreciate that. So, Mr. Chair, just briefly, the facts and travel. We were originally in front of the city for technical review in July of 2020, where we received feedback from the various departments and constituencies on our proposed raise and redevelopment of 955 Belmont Street, which is currently operating as gas station and convenience store. And based on the technical review comments and recommendations, we, and obviously by the ordinances, we then were, went in front of the Brockton Conservation Commission and received approval from them on December, I believe it was December 16th, 2020, and they offer, they issued their order of, order of conditions, which has been recorded since then. In front of the Conservation Commission, there was a few changes to the plans, which I'll point out. Those are the significant ones from the last time we were in front of the planning board. One of, one of the major changes that the members may see in the plans is we, with, and I should stop for one second. I would like to say thank you. The, the city has been so helpful. Pam has been so helpful. Agent Chavez from the Conservation Commission has been so helpful. The guidance of the Conservation Commission, this whole process, while we understand we have to comply with everything the city requires, has never played hide the ball, and we appreciate this, especially as we all know, it's really hard to get things done in these times, so I just want to say thank you. So we worked with Agent Chavez. We were able to discover, there was, as we talked about earlier, the technical review, a 25-foot, 50-foot wetland possible issue. We did some site visits and were able to determine that there, that issue was a little bit bigger than we thought, so we redesigned our plans to satisfy Agent Chavez and the commission, and those are the site plans which you have in front of you with our amended application. With those plans, you will note that the snow removal and storage has been moved to the opposite side of the property now on the southwesterly corner, and include also the trash enclosure, which was something we had planned to begin with. We also have eliminated the bio-retention area because determined that it was necessary to move some of the proposed improvements out of the wetland area and have satisfied the commission to that end. One of the other, I think, significance for us, yes, sorry.
I was going to ask, would you or your engineer like to share your drawing so you can point and talk as we go?
Sure, let me.
That might be helpful.
Yes.
I figure Michael spent all this time in college working on this degree. He should be able to put it up on there.
I love it. Okay, so let me, I can do this.
Oh, you've got it. All right.
I can do this. I feel confident, yet extremely nervous, but I can do this. So I have the plans as approved by the Conservation Commission and as submitted. So here, let's see if I can blow this up to not to. So here you'll see this is the determination that we worked on with Agent Chavez, where the the 50-foot, the 25-foot wetland buffer was, and, you know, with.
You're sharing, you're sharing Windows Explorer and not the actual application.
Huh. Really? Okay, I feel like I had my plans up. One second. Let me get out of that. Sorry. I apologize for that.
So you may, if it doesn't open up right away, you may have to unshare and then reshare.
Okay, do you possibly see that? No. Did that come up? Can you see that, Rob?
No.
All right, let me stop sharing. I will stop sharing, and let's try this. Let's try this again. Let me. Okay, screen share.
Yes.
Yay. See, that's the anxiety that my life is faced with in COVID. Thank you for your patience. So these are.
I would suggest Sheet C2, maybe, possibly.
Absolutely. So this is Sheet C2. Let me enlarge this for the group. How's that for a view?
Yeah, it's still pretty dense, but you could, you could bring.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could, maybe C1 is a little less dense and still shows the buffer. Is that, is that okay?
Yes, please, yeah.
Yeah, so here.
We don't, we don't need the fine, the fine, fine detail because we realized that you went before Concom and you submitted a notice of intent. You've received your order of conditions, so.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate that. So just to point out the, the change, so we're able to determine this is where the 25-foot notice or wetland buffer was. So we modified the redevelopment plan and moved this portion of the development that was originally very close or potentially inside. We moved it out so that it was far enough away that there was no issue, and, and, and Agent Chavez was, was very pleased. We did a site visit with Agent Chavez and, and re-flagged the area and was, we were able to determine that this was the best layout, and this is what the, the commission blessed as part of the order of conditions. So also as part of the order of conditions, as I was mentioning earlier, the snow removal and trap, well, let me stop for a second. So originally, the, right now, the existing conditions, the trash enclosure is located over on, on this side of the property, so knowing that we were redeveloping and knowing that we wanted to be very cognizant of the wetland buffer, we moved it over to the other side of the property, which we also moved in the redevelopment. We had planned to put snow removal on this edge of the property, and based on the recommendations from the commission, you'll see the snow storage is located here in the upper corner of the property and along the side of the proposed building. And that was again upon the recommendations of the commission. The other notable change from when we appeared in front of the commission and which was something that we were, you know, happy to oblige and work with the commission on is from the L1, and I will try to go slowly but quickly. On our landscaping plan, we were able to incorporate many more, we, we keep the existing mature trees, and we were able to incorporate many more native species of trees and shrubs in, within, you know, our landscape plan, and as Pam's been along the journey with us. I've, I've been schooled about native species of the trees and shrubbery in Brockton, so it's been a great learning.
Danielle, can I sneak in a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Do you like to be put on the spot?
So if I answer yes, I think, I love it. I, I will do my best to answer.
Tell me, tell me, tell me the percentage of green space, because one of the things in new development, which is I'm sure you know, is that we want to try to incorporate as much green space and vegetation. That's, you know, that's responsible development. So can you tell me what the percentage of the green space is on this project?
Yes, so what I, what I will say, and that is a very good question, and, and a consideration of ours as well, so I will answer in two ways. I will first say that while the size of the C store, the Seasons Corner Market store, is twice the area of the existing store, we still provide more than double the green space requirement. And if I may, because, you know, I'm I have a pretty good memory, but it's been kind of a tough few months. I'm going to cheat and go to our zoning table, which should show, yes. So the green space requirement is, for this zoning area is 10% as existing. We do recognize it's a reduction in the existing green space, but it's still double that which is required under the zoning ordinances. So you can see 10% required, existing 45. We're still at almost 30% of green space.
Well.
Do I do okay?
We would call that 25, but, okay.
Okay, we're going to call, oh, I apologize. Yes, I did almost really well, but yes, 25.
Very well.
Thank you.
And so you're going to, as far as the vegetation goes, you're going to be planting mature trees or you're not, you're going to be planting something better than, out of trees?
Yeah, so we're keeping the mature trees. Let me just, so, just for viewing purposes, let's scroll back down to the landscape plan. So we have three existing very mature trees, but one of the things in, with the requirements of the order of conditions and the, the commission's recommendation, the pulling down and replacing some of the species that are there will require us to replace them. So these will be replaced, but the intent, and it is now, this serves as a natural buffer between the store and, you know, the, the adjoining lot. That is the same intent. It will just be with different trees. I'm not exactly sure of the size, and if, if you would like us to speak to that, we can definitely.
No, you don't need to go, I mean, I think in your detail sheets, you did have calipers on some of the plantings.
Yes.
We just don't want, you know, what we call, I guess, I hate the phrase, it's called builders' plants or things like that. There, we want plants, we want plants that are young plants, but that are not, not stater plants, I guess you'd say.
Valid and excellent point. I will say that the client is spending a great deal of money and resources to improve this store, so the landscape that we will be providing, we, of course, would like it to, you know, enhance the total look of the project, and I think, as I'm trying to get to the last sheet where it shows the, the beautiful finished product. So we, keeping that in mind, and I was thinking, you say you didn't want puny little trees, but you said it much more eloquently. It, it will be, they will be replaced with trees that will mature, and, and based on whatever the measurements were in the lands, in, in Sheet L1. But of course, if we're, you know, the client's spending, Colby is very proud of their brand and family-owned business, they will not be skipping on landscaping. We'll, we'll comply, and, and as you know, so we'll be, we'll be complying with the commission. The commission had, these were revised plans for Sheet L1, was blessed by the commission, so we will be complying with what is provided there.
Yep. I, I don't mean to, I, I don't mean to rush you, but given the interest of the conservancy of time, I mean, you, you're, so basically stated, you, you went to the zoning vote of appeals, you've satisfied all of the requirements of, of the Conservation Commission. Apparently, it sounds like you've satisfied all the, all the requests of a check review, it would sound, because here you are, you're ready for approval. Do the, if you're, if you don't have any other pertinent points, Danielle, and I apologize.
Okay.
I feel like I'm cutting you off, but do any of the other planning board members have any other comments?
No, no comments, but I just noticed changing the coffee shop. So Mary Lou is changing to premises.
Um.
No, I can, I can speak to that, Danielle. No, Mary Lou is coming back in.
Yeah. I was trying to say, where, where does it say premises? Wait, stop. Yeah.
Yes, no, Mary, Mary Lou is involved in this as well. They will be coming back in as the co-brand on this space.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
That's good. All right, so any other board members have any questions? Okay. The only comment that I wanted to make, I just quickly went through the site plan. I know, I know it's had some rigorous reviews, but I didn't see, and maybe, maybe it was my, my own error, but I didn't see any stabilized construction exits. I think it's very important. You're working on the state highway there. You're going to need probably one at each, one at each entrance. Was there one on, on one of your detail sheets, and I didn't see it?
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to stay in my lane as the attorney for the client, so I will let either Paul or Rich from AU answer that question. They're much more familiar with the site plan, so Paul or Rich.
If you, sir, I can, I can speak to this.
Or Michael, thank you.
Yeah, Michael's here again. On Sheet ER1, we, we have all of our erosion control measures, and we do abide by strict, no overflow from the site, make sure that everything is safe on the site, clean up every day. Of course, we're on a state highway, so that, that matters.
Okay, so you, and you're providing one or two?
At both entrances. Yeah, there's two entrances up of that, that road, yeah.
Okay, and I apologize, sir. Does, does your plan indicate that?
I, I believe it is under, on sheet ER1.
You said ER1, Michael?
Correct.
In other words, it shows it on the plan view and then you have a detail in your detail sheet?
Yeah, and the, and the erosion control and order of procedures. It, it usually is detailed in that section. I'm going to take a quick look at it right now.
Yeah.
That's, that's really my only comment. I, I'd like to make sure that your, that your final plan set shows two, two stabilized construction exits with, with details.
So, uh, yeah, we, we can definitely have that as a condition.
So, um, all right, um, if there is, and I apologize, we have rather lengthy agenda. So on the part of the applicant, if there isn't any other significant points that you feel is what you want to make. I.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could just make a, a comment, I gave a sheet to Pam today and it just covers the basics with mulch placement, emergency responder radio requirements and traffic calming devices. The other question I had, and you just have to refresh my memory. You're playing on two tanks of 15,000 apiece. Is that correct?
I believe that is the plan. Yes, replacing the things that are there. Yes, right here.
And, and what is your current license capabilities? Are you aware of that?
Yes, we do have that. Right now, we, the current USTs that we have, forgive me for one sec, we do have two USTs, I believe. I would have to check on that for you, but I believe that we wouldn't be seeking any new licenses for the, for the USTs we're using to replace the current USTs. Is this, Chief, is there something specific that you were?
No, I just want to make sure that you're covered by your license for whatever you put into the ground.
Sure, absolutely. If we could supplement that, but I believe that there's no need to, we're not seeking any new license or an amendment of the current license in order to replace the USTs that are currently at the site.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Right. At this time, then Rob, this being a public hearing, I guess we can open this up to the public for any comments.
Attendees, if you have any questions or comments, please use the raise your hand function. Or you can use the question and answer function, but raising your hand is the easiest and fastest way to go. And I do not see anyone raising their hand, sir.
All right, wonderful. And before we close it out, does the planning department itself, any comments that they'd like to run?
We don't have any additional comments. We feel that it satisfies the site, site plan approval.
Okay, wonderful. All right. Well, hearing done, or hearing that is the only comment from the planning department. I guess we can move to a, to a vote. Would someone care to make a motion?
Motion to.
Yes, sir. One of the representatives, certainly, sir. Yeah.
I just wanted to, to chime in and, and speak to the fire marshal's point. We are reducing our fueling capacity. We currently have four 10,000 gallon tanks. And we are replacing them with two 15,000.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Okay, would someone care to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the site plan approvals for 955 Belmont.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second that. And don't we have conditions, your conditions, Mr. Chair?
These, the construction, the construction, stabilized construction entrances.
The condition that the construction entrances, exits are on the plan? Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, both on the plan and, and detail.
On the plan and on detail.
I mean, there are others, there are the boilerplate standard, standard, what would you say, conditions to, to go along with an approved site plan. But specifically, that's one of the ones that I made, so that's the only one that I heard. Correct, Pam?
Yep, I got it.
Correct.
Okay, so on the roll call. Motion been made and seconded to approve. Larry Hassan? Did we lose Larry?
Yes.
Okay, Larry's in the affirmative. Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Veggie Thomas?
Yes.
Bob Blagie is a yes. So I think you're all set, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. Thank you, everyone.
Danielle, I'll email you tomorrow with what we'll need.
Okay, perfect. Thanks so much, Pam. Good night, everyone.
Good night and thank you. Okay. Item number three.
We need to move.
Yeah, I know.
Get it up.
Night, Mr. Chair.
What?
We'll be here till midnight.
Well, I mean, I, I, you heard what I said three times.
Yep.
Site plan approval, property is at 863 Belmont Street. To use catalog, J.K. Holman's a representative.
Scott, is there anybody else? Scott, anybody else with you?
If there's anybody else on this case, please raise your hand so I can move you into, allow you to make your presentation.
Scott?
I think his daughter went back to college.
Okay.
Maybe go to the next one and come back to.
Wait a minute, why can't you hear me?
Scott muted or something? He's, he's texting us.
He is, but we can't hear him, so.
So let's go to the next case and ask Scott to log off and log back in again.
All right, so we'll put this item on. Okay.
596 Main, North Main Street.
Could you raise your hand? If you're the.
590.
590 Main? There she is.
Okay, so.
Okay.
War has been continued. Next item is 59, 598 North Main Street. It's a permission to return to the zoning board of appeals. Maria Flores. Do we have Maria?
Yes. Sorry, yes. Hi, sorry. I'm Maria's daughter. I was helping her, um, connect with the Zoom. She's unfamiliar with the Zoom, so. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Okay, you'd like to make a a brief presentation. This is a return to the zoning board of appeals. This is 598 North Main. So basically, the objective here is that you were denied by the zoning board of appeals. You need to be familiar with what was written in the decision because what you need to come before us tonight to convince us is that, that you have some new and different material that, that would cause us to send you back to the zoning board of appeals in less than two years. That's in the law. That's not our rule. That's in the state, that's in the state zoning code. So what is it that, what is it that you have that you've submitted or what is it that you can explain to us that is new and different? Using, using the zoning board's decision as your guide, that you can, that you, that you have us send you back to the zoning board?
And if the applicant doesn't have the site plan available, I will, I will put it up on the, on the screen for you, if you don't mind.
Are you going to speak for your mother?
Um, well, she, you can basically explain it to them at least what the plan is now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. She can, she can, she can explain the new plan.
Okay. Um, well, I am looking at a mixed use with, with a commercial on the bottom and, um, two apartments on top. And, um, I was denied because there was no, um, because of the egresses, which we, um, we had the fire escape on one side and then those were stolen and then was replaced. But then when, um, I was denied because those fire escape were over leaning over the, the neighbor's property. So basically, the new revised plan is that we're building, we will be building the deck on the other, on the opposite side. The deck will be extended all the way around to have a second way of egress. So that's basically the new plan.
Okay. Did you? So this is, so this is basically, this is basically a two-story building. You've got a, you've got a, you've got a, what is it, a florist shop on the first floor?
Yes.
And then you've got two apartments on the second floor?
Yes.
Okay. And how does, how does that? Right. Okay, I'm just reading, I'm just reading. Did you get, did you get, you must have, you sent one in. You had a copy of the zoning's decision? Did you get, you have a, a copy of the zoning board's decision?
The, when I went, when I went last, I have that somewhere.
Well, again, you, you heard my explanation as to how you get back to the zoning board, right? Because I'm reading from the zoning board's decision. The zoning board said the, the board found no hardship demonstrated at the locus. It said that you, that you had inaccessible egress. Uh, granting, it said granting of the mixed use. If you have, if you have a commercial venture on the bottom floor and then you've got residential on the second floor, that's called a mixed use. It says granting of the mixed use occupancy would derogate from the intent of the zoning bylaws and will, will negatively impact the orderly development of the neighborhood. That suggests to me that if you went before the zoning board again, they're going to tell you the same thing again. You don't have a hardship and they're, and they're, they're discouraging you from the mixed use. That's what they, that's what, that's what the written decision said. So you, you're doing essentially the same thing. You, you're not changing anything. A change to me would be if you, if you quit the, if you, if you quit the, the mixed use. I, I don't know, you'd, you'd need an attorney to help you with a hardship. But if you quit the mixed use, at least you'd be, you'd be, how can I say? You'd be, you'd be coming more into compliance with the zoning board's wishes. They denied you for specific reasons and, and you haven't altered those. You haven't made any alterations to the reasons that they denied you.
Well.
Yes, you've made some changes to the plan, but you, you haven't addressed the theory of the, of the denial of the zoning board's decision.
Well, the, the denial was because of the, the egresses, which we didn't have, we don't have, we didn't have egresses coming from the second floor and we're adding. So the, the, the deck is going to be extended all the way around the building. So it's going, it's going to be egresses for each apartment, two egresses. That's basically what they were looking for.
Well, they're looking, well, they did mention, they did mention that. Yes, you're correct, but, but as equally as important, they said you didn't have a hardship for variance. And they also said that, that, that mixed use was not allowed. And they said that they, in their opinion, that they, that they would not support mixed use. So even though you've made some changes to your plan and in your opinion, you've improved your egresses, you still have a mixed use. Did you, did you read the zoning decision?
Yes, I did. That's why I was told to go to planning board. With any, to try to go back to the zoning board.
Well, I mean, that's my, those are my comments.
Well, I, I, I'm reading that it was denied from going from a one to a two apartment unit. I mean, is this two apartments now or one? Because.
Well, he's got, they've got the bottom floor, the entire bottom floor is a commercial venture. It's going to be some type of a, a florist business. Then the top is two separate apartments.
But it's. Things, the thing is, sorry to interrupt you. Um, the thing is, it used, it, it was, it was, I guess supposedly many years ago, one big apartment, which my mom, when she bought the, the property was two. So I guess they dug deep into like the history of the building and it says that it was only one apartment. So that's where the dilemma is. So my mom's trying to, you know, fix this and she was under the impression that it just needs two exits because of the situation. So that's why I think the confusion is. So that's why she's gotten, she's gotten the site plan of the two exits there. So I don't know if there's like a confusion.
Larry?
Mentions egress, but it's, it, it does clearly state, do, do the other board members have a copy of the decision? Anytime we do one of these, return to the zoning board, you need to have a copy of the zoning board's decision.
Okay, they didn't ask me for that.
Mr. Chair, I have a question too.
No one asked us for that. Yeah, I didn't know we, um, needed that in front of us. I, what, we weren't told that we needed this.
What you, what you needed, what you probably could have used, you don't have to, but what you caught it, could have used is the, is the, is the assistance of a lawyer, is the assistance of an attorney. You're not required.
They had an attorney the first time, Mr. Chair. They were attempting to do this themselves this time. Well, I had an attorney and, um, the attorney didn't do anything for us. And now we're left without an attorney and we're trying to attempt to do this ourselves going forward.
Did you have a question, Mr. Hassan?
Yes. Is the, is the current use, are there two apartments on the second floor currently or no?
I've bought the property as a two apartment and it's still a two apartment. But it's not, no one lives there now because, you know, the situation.
Right.
So there's everything, you know, two apartments, two meters, two gas meters, electrical, everything.
Just for clarity, when you say that it's two apartments, the, in the city's eyes, there's one apartment on each floor.
No, this is se, the second floor, Chairman. Second floor.
So on the second floor, Mr. Chair, it, it, it looks to me like there's, there were two existing apartments, a one bedroom and a two bedroom, but I don't believe they were proper egresses. And I saw a note somewhere too, even with the new proposed egresses, I think it came from Chief Williams. The second egress out of the front unit bedroom. It can't share the same staircase. I'm not sure about that, but I'm just trying to clarify what the current use of the building is now.
Look, they, they used to be, I'm sorry to interrupt you. They used to, there, there used to be a fire escape. It's still there. The fire escape I purchased with the house.
Right.
So they, there's two.
Those are the metal fire, fire escapes out of the windows, correct?
Correct, correct. They were, they were always there. So basically because that's not acceptable, those fire escape coming out of the window, they, they, they two, they're only 22 inches wide. So that's not accepted, it was not accepted by the, by the building department. So basically on this revised, the deck that's on the opposite side is going to go around, as you can see on the, on the drawing, it's going to go around the windows. Okay, all around the, the side of the building, all the way coming towards the front. And that's going to be the second way of egress.
So each, each apartment has two, two independent egresses?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, lunch.
And, and what, when you, how lo, how long ago did you buy the building?
Back in, um, 19, um, 90, 95.
And when you bought the building, ma'am, did you, did you do a, did you have someone do what was called a legal use before you bought it?
Well, I bought it from the bank, attorneys and everything. Well, I bought it from what, the bank, attorneys and everything. But back in, I, I guess back then, and with the real estate from Brockton, um, that's all the information they gave me. I mean, I have a packet on the, I mean, they had.
What's been on the first floor since nineteen ninety-five, what has been on the first floor all this time?
A store, there was a store, there was a store, it was a, it was a, a gift shop before.
I wondered, then I, I to, I guess I'm, I guess I'm totally confused, because I'm, I'm confused by the zoning board's comment that, that a mixed use, a granting of the mixed use occupancy would derogate from the intent of the zoning bylaws and, and, and negatively impact the orderly development of the neighborhood, when you're telling us that it's been a mixed use for twenty-five years.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it has.
Um, I believe what's happened is that at, at one time, this property was commercial on the first floor and had a, a, a single apartment on the second floor. At, at some time in history, that changed and, and there were then two units up there. Now that probably happened illegally. I'm not saying that the applicant had done that, but we have a history of Brockton of things just happening overnight. So she may have purchased two apartments, uh, 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 two units, a building with two units on the first, on the second floor, excuse me. At
That's why I asked my question.
After that point though, um, the units went vacant. And the zoning uh, board and the building department are saying that to reestablish that use, which has expired because it became non-conforming and the non-conformity had been vacated for over two years, according to the building department. They need to reestablish that use. And so they came to the zoning board seeking uh, to reestablish a two-unit building, uh, two residential units on the second floor. And that's what the zoning board turned down.
Okay, I got you, so in other words, they lost over time because of lack of use, lack of consistent use, they lost that two apartment, legal use.
Correct.
They lost the legal use of the two apartments, and so one of the things that they're apparently looking for is to, is to reestablish the legal use on the second floor.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, I mean, they're sending you back to the zoning board, establish that, they're saying, they're saying that, they're saying that in their opinion, even though you'd like to reestablish it, that, that they're saying that they're not, they're not in favor of that, in addition to the fact you don't have a hardship, they're saying, again, I, 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 I direct your attention to the, to, to the, to the, to the verbiage in the, in the decision. Granting of the mixed use occupancy would derogate from the intent of the zoning bylaws and would, would negatively impact the orderly development of the neighborhood, that the zoning board, I, I don't wanna speak for them, but it sounds to me like after deliberation, they're not gonna grant you that. That you had, that you, you've asked, you've asked for the granting of the mixed use, use at your site, apparently by the sound of the, the tone and the, and the basis that they wrote, they're not gonna grant that.
Well, they were asking.
That's gonna be your biggest problem, I appreciate that you put some work into, you know, re- redesigning or upgrading your, your egresses, but that alone, I don't think, based on the fact you don't have a hardship and based on the fact that they're, that, 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 that they are very discouraging of your mixed use, I don't know how far you're gonna go.
It's so, my, my hardship is that I bought the property as a two-family, okay, and you, we used it for years as a two-family upstairs and then my fire escape was stolen, okay, once it was stolen, I had to replace it and then by replacing it, I was told that it's not, that, you know, it's not acceptable because of the length of the fire escape, so.
That's, I don't, I don't, I mean, I think that that's something that needs to be taken care of as the owner, but I don't see, that's not a hardship. Hardship is, I don't wanna get too in the weeds here. Hardship is determined on a zoning case i- in the zoning, in the, in the zoning code, chapter forty-eight, section six, it's very specific of what constitutes a hardship and, and a, a, a missing or damaged fire escape does not qualify for that. I don't know, board members, any, any thoughts that are here?
No, I, 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 un- unfortunately, I feel bad, but I agree with you, Mr. Chair, be, there's two issues here, the zoning board is, is not in agreement with two units upstairs. And then if, if you consider going back to one unit, that would be a sub- substantial change.
Right, but they had offered, um, they gave us two, um, another opinion as well, um, to build a, a sprinkler system as well as the egresses, um, as an option as well, so I don't, I don't, that's why we're confused, I mean, I thought that.
You know what, again, here again, because we're, I don't wanna belabor this, we have a very long agenda, so I, you know, I, I think we've heard pretty much all of the details, um. If you, if you were going to establish a hardship, your hardship should have been at that zoning meeting, because you, you don't, your, your hardship, the element of hardship when it comes to a variance, um, that should have been well-established at your first appearance at the zoning board. In my opinion, I mean, I wasn't at the meeting and this is the planning board, not the zoning board, but.
Well.
I don't, I don't see, I don't see, in a, i- 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 I don't see, to me, as being open-minded and fair as I can, I just don't see the basis, you haven't established the basis for return to the zoning board, in my opinion.
Uh, Mr. Pelagi?
I would like to say something.
Councillor Azak would like to address the board.
Okay.
Good evening, Board, I'm Shirley Azak, what's seven city councillor, and um, I was not contacted by the applicant this evening, but I, I was on the meeting for another uh, project in the ward. But I just want to let you know, uh, Chairman Pelagi, I was at the zoning board meeting that Ms. Flores presented this to, and uh, there may have been some sort of miscommunication, because I do also remember the board giving her suggestions about um, the different, the, what she could do with the fire escape and the easement. So I'm not sure what you can do about it this evening, but there were suggestions made by the zoning board for her to make changes for what looks like she's done this evening with the plans that she's presenting. Um, so I'm not sure what you can do, I don't know if you can postpone it till we, you get more information from the zoning board, but I would hate to see this get denied when the zoning board did give the, some of these suggestions.
Well, I mean, you could, uh, I don't know, i- if, if you, if you, if we were to continue it, I don't know if you could get clarification just by going up to the building department, I don't know if there's anybody there that's gonna speak in behalf, maybe the, well, the building, I suppose you may be able to speak to the building commissioner, maybe.
I, I mean, my suggestions, instead of just denying it, could you postpone it for her or not until it's clarified or?
Continue.
Members?
Her second attempt, so that if, if you were to deny this, um, at this time, they have to wait the remainder of the two years.
So we can, can you correct?
I, I, I would recommend continuing if that's what the board would like to do, however, I would like, and I don't mean to throw him under the bus, but uh, Deputy Chief Williams, uh, there is a, an issue about the fire escape or e- egress. And uh, I was wondering if you'd like to address that or I can give my best.
Sure, no, I, I'll address it, no problem. Um, it's my understanding of the building code that that second egress that's out of the front apartment, um, out of the bedroom of the front apartment, right there, that can't use the same stairway as the other regress, which is right there, right? So I, I think they have to have independent stairways. So what I would suggest the applicant do between now and the next meeting is confer with the building commissioner what he thinks of those plans before you come back here, because I, I think that's an issue, I think you need an independent second stairwell out of the front apartment.
Can you, Rob, just, can you, since you've got your, thank you for posting that, can you show where the sh- the shared stairway is for the, for the separate egresses? Where, where is the?
So this is the shared stairway goes to unit two and goes to unit one. Unit two has an exit out here. Unit one, you exit out the bedroom across a, a balcony and you use the same staircase here. So if there were a fire here, I have no way out of this unit now.
You know, it's, you know, it's dis- disappointing, this was done by an architect, that plan was done by, I, I forget, I forget uh, who it was, but that plan, I see what you, I see your point, they're sharing a stairway, is, is this.
Share the stairway.
Yeah.
Does the applicant understand that?
Yep, you can't do that, no, thank you, Chief Williams. So, does that, does that type of, Chief Williams, while we have you there, so other than, in others that they could modify that, does, is that, is that egress solution, like an open stairway like that, is that acceptable?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, I mean, all right, um, you've got some, okay. Okay, you've got some, it looks like to me, you've got some, you've got some work to, to modify the plan. There's two things you've gotta do that you should have learned in this exercise. You've gotta get clarification on, on, on what the zoning's, the zoning decision, the im- the implication of the zoning, the zoning decision, what the implications of that written decision is. And you, you can do that maybe by going up to the building department. And you also gotta modify these plans, if you hope to be successful with these plans, you've gotta split those two egresses, you can't share the stairway, you understand those two points?
Yes, yes, I will go see Mr. Plough there at the building.
Mr. Who?
Isn't it Mr. Plough?
Oh, Mr. Plough, yes, yes.
Yeah, 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 I met with him before, I, I know who he is.
It, it also sounds like according to Councillor Sack, Sacker, we need more clarification too, because we're receiving conflicting information here.
Yeah.
Um, she's saying that she was there for the last zoning board meeting and suggestions were made and nothing was mentioned about being an issue with the two apartments on the second floor. But in, what I'm reading is that there's an issue with that and, so, um, I don't know who's gonna get that additional information for us, but we need that as well.
Okay, well, um, would someone, no, wait a minute, this is a public hearing, so um, I think we've heard, we've discussed it enough, I think we know enough of the background, enough of the details. Uh, at this time, Mr. May, do you have anybody that wants to speak?
Uh, anybody who would like to speak, um, who is an attendee, please raise your hand, we will unmute you and move, uh, and, and allow you to discuss this case.
Thank you so much.
Please, again, raise your hands. And I do not see anyone raising their hand. And with that, I would, you know, it, it, it's the board's pleasure, but uh, would think that recommending uh, it to the date certain March meeting, March second.
Is that, is that enough time, is that enough time for you, ma'am?
Yes, I'm gonna meet, meet um, with the building department.
And that's enough time to have the meeting and then revise your plans?
Yes, yes, I'm gonna do all of that.
Okay, and then do understand, please, that even if you revise your plans, uh, you know, until we meet and look at what you have and discuss it, it's not an absolute guarantee that you, I want you to understand, it's not necessarily guaranteed that you're gonna be sent back to the zoning board. Because you have other issues that, please, get a copy of the zoning decision and read it.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I, I, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not giving you advice. Um, but the, the ruling from the zoning board said you have no hardship, which in and of itself could be a dead, i- is a dead stop. But then they went on to say other things. And changing those other things doesn't necessarily mean, you know, this is the most important one, is the hardship. So if you could, if you could address the hardship through your, through an attorney.
I, I, I've said that, that's what I said at my open, that's, that was my, that was my strongest concerns with this, the fact that you don't have a hardship. You, you, you're not, the fact that you didn't have one at the time you were there, and it doesn't sound like you have one now and you're, and, 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 and that, that, in their, in their, in their opinion, they, they were opposed to a mixed use, those are huge things.
Well, I'm gonna call, I'm going also to contact my attorney who was on this case before, because, I mean, he, he actually worked on this. I paid a lot of money to have, for him to do everything, so, but nothing, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm at, still at the same way when I first started. Well, you, you might. What, he was supposed to have a hardship, I mean, he's supposed to help me with his hardship.
Yes, he is, so you might wanna divide this into you, you meeting with the building inspector and getting details on what, on what the egress is and then, then have him take a look at what is, what is a, what is a, an acceptable hardship and um, overcoming the, the mixed use comment that the zoning board did, because you're gonna get, that's gonna come up again. I guarantee you, the zoning board has all the notes on this, and when you come before them again, the file is gonna be fresh in front of them and it's gonna be right there. So anyway, I, we, I think we've covered this enough, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue to March second.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made to continue to March second. Um, and uh, let's see, we need a.
It was seconded by uh, Larry.
Yes. So we need a vote on the roll call, uh, Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Uh, Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Bob Pelagi is a yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
I'll go back to Scott.
Let's go back to Scott.
Okay.
Scott's the pro at this, how come we can't hear you?
See there?
There we go.
There he is.
Oh, there he is.
All right, it, it was a very technical issue. I didn't have the camera plugged in.
Stop being a newbie.
Oh, man. This isn't easy.
All right, you're up.
All right. Great. Uh, thank you folks, Scott Faria from Home Green Engineering, uh, representing SNE LLC at eight sixty-three Belmont Street, uh, it's the site of the old Chinese restaurant on Belmont Street that's been vacant for a couple of years.
Uh, Scott, do you have anybody else with you?
I do not.
Okay, 'cause I know there's two Nazarelas and I didn't know where the one might be when he applied.
No, it is not, uh, it, actually, it, it, it could be, one of them, uh, one of the owners could be there. Either John or Beverly, or George.
If you're, if you're part of this case, please raise your hand and we'll move you into the panelists.
Nope, it, it looks like it's.
One is Phil.
Phil, it looks like it's Phil twice then, okay.
Let's have a chance of him screwing up, if there's two connections for him. So, uh, not that I should talk. Anyways, we went to tech review in October, uh, had a few changes to make, nothing all that major, we added some curbing at the rear of the parking lot. Uh, we shifted a catch basin in the parking lot as suggested by the city engineer. Uh, Conservation Commission, recently we filed with them, they wanted us to extend the siltation protection and also eliminate a note regarding some clearing, so we've made those changes. Uh, what our proposal is, is to uh, take the existing building at eight sixty-three, uh, we're gonna raise the uh, newer section of the building and keep the original uh, portion of the building about three thousand square feet as the sales office uh, for SNE's uh, future tie dealership at this location, we went to the Board of Appeals, uh, they granted the variance for uh, for this plan. We've updated the utilities, we have a new drainage system, right now there is no drainage on the site, we've updated that, we have a new drainage system. Uh, everything else conforms to your regs, we received a uh, review this morning from the planning department and we have one small issue, I think, we have the entrance coming off of Belmont Street, we don't quite have it at twenty-four feet, it looks like it's about a twenty-foot entrance. Uh, so we need to revise that entrance to twenty-four feet. In doing so, we will lose one space, so we'll have uh, sixty-six spaces instead of the sixty-seven that we have right now. Uh, so we'd like the opportunity to make that change, get that before the board. Thank you, Rob. Uh, and in the meantime, also, we were in the process of uh, going through the approval uh, process with Conservation Commission. Uh, we expected that would have got uh, taken care of at their January meeting, but they did not have a. Uh, we expected that would have got, uh, taken care of at their January meeting, but they did not have a quorum. So, we're back before the Conservation Commission on the 17th, I believe it is, uh, for their approval. So, I think, in seeing the planning department's comment and still waiting for the, uh, the conservation to sign off on the project, I think we'd like to continue until your March meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Uh, would you, you would you, uh, be willing to entertain a curiosity question?
Certainly. About a construction entrance?
Well, I'm sorry?
Is it about a construction entrance?
You mean a stabilized construction exit?
That's the one.
Oh, don't egg him on.
Well, there's that, but the, why, why is this site so so dense with with parking spaces? Do you absolutely need? I mean, every one of those, it it's so tight that it, it's a is a used car, so it's a used car dealership?
That's correct.
So, you've got, it says you've got free customer parking. Is there any, is there any repair on the site, Scott?
None at all. That was one of the conditions. Uh, SNE has a site up the street. That's been before you folks, uh, in the last year or two, that they're adding on a couple of bays to it, so the plan is they do all the repairs off-site at that location, at their Belmont Street location. It was specifically stated in the granting of the variance that no repairs would be done at this site.
Okay, I'm just curious. I mean, I, if I I probably, I'm just, it it just seems, I mean, if you're a customer there, you'd almost be worried about your car, wouldn't you? I don't know, it just seems so dense, but anyway.
Well, I mean, the the customer parking is up front with regular spaces and regular travelway. It's the, uh, the car, the for-sale cars are in the back in that dense location, as you said.
Right, and and and.
Scott, is this customer parking down here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, is that, how do you get, but spot 62 is being blocked by spot 67?
Right, the the customer parking is is spaces 61 and 67, right there, those two spaces that Rob has. And then, again, 62 through 66 being the the spaces right up in the front, those would be, uh, the used car spaces to show the cars right on Belmont Street.
Oh, those are your best items?
Exactly.
I was wondering, are you going to?
So, you have two.
Those are your showcase items, uh, Scott?
That would be it, Mr. Chairman.
What's the total number that the license is going to permit? Or do you have a license yet?
It would be 58. Uh, I, we do not have a license yet, I don't believe. It would be 58, and then, uh, losing this one space would would get it down to 57.
Now, if you lose number 66, is it a deal breaker?
No.
Uh, board members, any comments?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, so you have two customer parking spaces. Where do the employees park? If the rest of these spaces are.
Yep.
Um.
The employee spaces are, there you go, they're up on Linus Ave, right there, yep, right where you handed, there you go.
Will some of these, but some of these are in the same numbering scheme as your license request. So, you you have 58, uh, that you're requesting licenses for.
Right.
Two of which are customers, and I don't know how many are, well, this has to stay open, so that's another three that is is a customer space, uh, and two or three employee parking?
Yeah, I I didn't specify exactly spaces one through 58 being sales, but I I could do that on the revised plan, just to make it clearer.
Do you have, does this parking lot have access to Linus Avenue, Scott?
No.
It does.
It does not?
It 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 does, although we're not, yeah, we're not using it.
Someone, how does, you know what I'm missing? Can you just take me quickly with your little cursor there? How does somebody go from Belmont Street i- to the employee parking space and then back out of it?
All the way up, you've got a 24-foot wide travelway. Across the back, again, you've got a 24-foot travelway, and then where the employee parking is, you have a 31-foot travelway.
So, come in here.
Yep.
Drive, and then come in here.
And like I said, it's a, it's a 31-foot travelway at that location. It's obviously wider than normal. And everything else is 24, except at the entrance, which we need to change.
And do you, do you, I mean, so do you meet, I'm sure you do, you meet green, minimum green space requirement, right?
Yeah, we've got, uh, we've got 25%. The whole back of it is green space. There's a whole bunch of green space, actually.
Are you going to green up anything in the front or on the sides or anything?
Uh, yeah, we have landscaping. Uh, the front is a bio-retention area, so there's a a little bit of landscaping involved with that. And then along the right-hand side, along Linus Ave, uh, the right-hand side of the building, there's landscaping. And then in the back right-hand corner of the, uh, of the parking lot, there is also landscaping. And then just the natural vegetation in the back. It's wooded in the back already.
Wow, it's so dense.
I mean, it's all, it's all existing parking. We're not adding any paving at all. It's all there. That's all, uh, exist, you know, the existing parking lot for the restaurant. We're not adding anything, Mr. Chairman. If anything, we're actually taking out a little bit by doing the bio-retention area in the front, uh, and adding a little bit of landscaping alongside of the building, but.
Can you, could you, can you humor us and 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 improve on the on on some of the vegetation? Because it is on Bel- brand-new Belmont Street, and it is all of those properties up and down this spot. Uh, you know, all of those properties, we just had one before you that, um, they're doing another gas station, and they're doing extensive, I expect it to be a thing of beauty. They're doing extensive uh, vegetating there. I mean, that's.
I, yeah, we.
I mean, I I I guess you, I guess if you're complying with, I'm just asking that.
No, I, we, we, I'm sure George and Beverly would be happy to do more, Mr. Chairman, in the front. You know, right at the, right at the front, we can do more. There's, uh, as I said, a bio-retention area, but right in front of the building, there is, uh, there's room there to do some landscaping. I will add that to the plan.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, again, if you look up, if you look up at the up and down the street, you've done some of those, and you see what some of the new, the new current day development has as far as greening up the green space, and it's, they they these these commercial sites look beautiful. So, anything you could do, uh, in in fact, if you you're coming back with a modification, if you could, in addition to modifying the 24-foot wide minimum entrance, and then, you know, add, make your best effort to add some vegetation there, it would be greatly appreciated.
We will do that.
And you said, do you have a stabilized construction exit?
We do on sheet C4, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, comments on the on the part of the board?
Nope, um, just he wants to continue it, so maybe it's a public hearing. Anybody in raising their hand?
Yep. Uh, well, we got.
Anybody wishing to speak, please raise your hand using the raise your hand function, or if you're more comfortable typing, um, your questions, we can also do it that way. And seeing none, um, Mr. Chairman, I see no hands raised.
All right, I think we have, uh, an agreement here, so, uh, we will continue. I guess we'll continue. The next meeting is okay, Scott?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, fine. So, would someone like to make a motion to continue this site plan approval to the next meeting with the with the revisions as discussed?
Make a motion to continue plan to the next meeting with the revisions discussed.
Okay, so we've got a motion in a second to continue, uh, a vote by roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a is a yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
See you later. Yeah, I'll be, I hope. No promises.
Keep your camera plugged in.
All right, so we move, we're moving right along to what, number six?
Yes.
Another ZBA return, those are good.
Could you raise your hand? The applicant?
John has moved in, and I'm moving in.
I'm.
Scott out.
Hello, everybody.
There you, okay. You're up, John.
Well, I think we're, we might be waiting for Bill Self. I just got off the phone with him. This is the, uh, Augusta State's, uh, property.
No.
This is my lot.
Owned by Fred Hepshee.
No, no, wrong one, John. We're not doing that.
We're on numbers, we're on, uh, returned to the ZBA.
Oh, I, did I miss that? I'm sorry. Just tell me to shut up.
Shut up.
We would never do that, John.
You can just hang on there until, because you'll be up after that.
So, it's it's one Milet? Millet?
Yeah, Francesca.
Yes.
Okay, and then you're up.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that's? There's a Bill. Is that Bill Self?
That's Bill Self.
All right, so, huh, okay.
Bill, I'll hold you until the next topic.
All right, Francesca.
Okay, thank you. Good evening to the board. How are you? I am, I'm here today with the planning board because I currently have a multifamily that happens to be located in a C2 zone. Um, I did go to the building department when I purchased the property, and, um, it's an existing three-family, or was when I purchased it, according to public records in the assessor's office. Uh, so I went to the building department and I applied for a permit to rehab the property. Um, I was denied the permit, but recommended to go to the zoning board of appeals um, to, and this was because it was vacant for two years, so it lost its use. It was no longer, um, it lost its non-conforming use. So, I did apply to the zoning board of appeals. And I was denied for a couple of reasons. I know that they were concerned about lack of parking and also, um, or or actually, they were concerned about, yes, lack, too much parking and not enough green space. Um, so what the recommendation was at that time was that maybe a two-family was better suited for that area. So, I have, um, changed and modified the plans, and now I'm returning to the ZBA with a two-family, uh, dwelling.
Okay, um, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so I'm reading, I'm reading the zoning board's decision, and the zoning board says the board found that the current vacant structure located in the C2 zone is in a dangerous, unsafe, abandoned condition that has been deemed to be, um, I guess it's revision, repeat, the dangerous and unsafe condition as as declared by the Board of Survey as described in a letter from the City of Brockton Building Department dated Ja- January the 27th, 2020. You must be in, you must be in possession of that letter, man, right?
I am, so I did.
Now, let me just finish. You just finished my thought. It further said, the building department has ordered the building to be demolished. I mean, does that concern you?
Absolutely. I have addressed the concerns with the building inspector, and I, what I was asked to do was to secure the eaves at the, um, of the structure and also to board up all of the windows and secure the property, which I have done since the time that that letter was, um, you know, since I was notified.
So, the lot is, the lot is a, the lot is a 4336 square feet, right?
Yes.
I'm just curious. So, so what what is the legal determination of the, what is the legal use as far as the, as far as the assessor's office is concerned? What is the legal use of the building right now without any variances or anything?
So, it's it's currently a three-family, but at some point, the zoning uh, on Milet Street, on the right-hand side of Millet Street, was converted into a commercial, was was converted to C2.
Right, but but every every piece of property in the city has has a what is called a legal use. As Mr. May said, as Mr. May said in another hearing, sometimes things mysteriously get expanded, things seem to grow, but every building in the city has a legal use. So, I'm asking you if you know, what is the legal use of, does the, does the, does the planning department know what the legal determination of the building is? What is the legal use of the building? Is it is a legal two-family?
Are you asking myself or the board?
If you know that.
Yes, it's it's a three-family. It's as a, you know, as a, according to the assessor's office and according to public record, it is a three-family.
Assessors don't determine the, um, lea- the legal use of a building. They only assess for what they see.
Oh, understood.
Deal boxes on your building?
So, who who makes, who makes, who makes legal use determinations, building?
The building department.
Oh, it's the building, okay, I'm sorry, the building department. So, my curiosity question is, i- if you are a legal three, okay, and you predated zoning, and you're a legal three, what is it that you need relief from the zoning board of appeals? Why can't you just rehabilitate the building in its own footprint?
What I was told is.
That's your, that's your right to do that.
It is. What I was, what I'm understanding is that because the property, prior to me owning it, it was vacant for a certain amount of time. So, when I did purchase it, it had been sitting for two years, and it lost its non-conforming, it was non-conforming. It lost its use as a three-family.
That part I did not understand. I thought it was in use. Okay, so the, it lost because of the zoning that it's in, it lost its, it lost its non-conforming use.
Exactly.
It lost its non-conforming use because you quit the use. You are a predecessor, quit the use. Okay, I get it.
Right, but it's it is, you know, I would like to make it clear that I have not abandoned the building in any way. I've, you know.
The term is abandon the use. I know you didn't abandon the building.
Oh, yes. No, I mean, I'm actively trying to. Right, I'm actively trying to obtain a a permit, um, from the building department. I'm I'm looking to comply uh, with, you know, whatever their wishes are. You know, I I do not want it to sit there and disrepair. I did try to see if I could work something out where I could at least secure and put on a roof, but, you know, they ultimately decided that, you know, they would like me to just go back to zoning and, um, and it would be better suited for a two-family, is what I'm being told.
And and again, you're not concerned that there was an order to to demolish the building?
Oh, I am concerned. I did reach out to the building department, and what I was told is to secure the property as best I could, including the eaves, which I have done, uh, so that it's, and I also had a, you know, a general contractor look at the property. A structural engineer has reviewed the property and determined that, you know, it is, it's not coming down at any time soon, but I would like to obtain a permit.
Somehow we can't, we lost her?
No, she said.
Uh, I would, I would like to, uh, obtain a permit and go ahead and, you know, renovate the property if possible.
Um, maybe, uh, Mr. May knows, does this building have to be demolished, or can it, can it be refurbished to a two-family?
Um, hang on, I'm second, I'm trying to find, uh, Councilor Castro. I'm going to move her into the panelists, because this is her ward. It it is pretty well gutted out, um, right now, and, um, it probably could be salvaged, um, as a two-unit. Uh, one of the issues that the department has is that, uh, the applicant wishes to add a dormer to really convert what was basically an attic into a, uh, a new living area that is roughly the size of of half the house. And not saying that the applicant is going to do this, but in Brockton, those kind of things tend to get converted later on into additional apartments. So we need to be wary of that. I'm going to put the plan up if you don't mind. I realized that applicant had not had a chance to do that. And I'm looking at the first floor.
Oh, thank you.
So here is, let me. Oops. So here is the existing building. This is an addition that the applicant is looking to do to provide a second level of egress. Typically, a house like this would have had a balcony. And this is the second floor. Again, this is the addition to provide additional egress. And then this is a dormer that the applicant wishes to add to the property to create a master bedroom, walk-in closet and bath. And then this is the the area of that dormer that she wants to add, just FYI. And then this is the addition. Which I can't tell if that's indoor or outdoor exposed to the weather.
Am I am I unmuted? That is actually a port. Those are egresses, so a porch essentially.
Okay, so that's out. Okay, thank you.
So so what are the what are the major changes? What are the things that what are the changes that would have you going back to the zoning board?
So the original plans that present were presented were a three family structure. This is now a two family structure with more green space as requested. And also, you know, because we've eliminated some of the parking, you know, because you need a certain amount of parking spaces if you are going to have a three family. So we are now downsizing to a two family. We are no longer having that enclosed addition that he spoke of with the egress. It'll just be, you know, an outdoor egress, which is essentially porches with stairs. One thing I did want to add is that the third floor does not have a second egress. It will not be used as a separate living space. I just wanted to clarify that. It would be combined with the second floor unit. So that's just simply a bedroom, a closet and a bathroom. Yes, just to clarify.
Why does so why does? I mean, your lot is so small, you've got you're creating two, three bedroom apartments. Why does that second floor apartment need a master bedroom?
What what I believe is that when you do have that additional space, I mean, essentially for a two family, you're probably going to have an owner occupied individual there. And, you know, I'm sure that they would appreciate the extra space on the third floor. That was my thinking when it came down to the plans. You know, that makes the second, I'm sorry. Third floor. That makes this second apartment a four bedroom or a three bedroom? It would then be a four bedroom, yes.
That's that's to me, that's that is over development. I mean, my goodness.
Well, it looks like the space is there available.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, yes.
It's very common today that in these what we call two and a half story colonials, that the second and third floor get combined into one like townhouse unit. It's extremely common to be able to make more bedrooms. To answer Tony's question, anything can be fixed if you have enough money. They took out both stairways in this property. The front stairway that they built is built without a foundation. That's going to have to be all reconstructed right now. The gables are just hanging on. And I sent an email today and I'll pass it on, but back about a month or so ago, there were large holes being created in the foundation. I'm not sure what really did that. But if you have enough money, you can fix up just about anything. The one thing I I just noticed, looking at the floor plan, the new proposed floor plan with the new outdoor stairway, that's in a different location than what is shown on the plot plan. Or is there another plot plan that shows the new location of the new exterior stairway?
I don't know.
Francesca?
I'm pulling up my individual plan right now.
Yeah, the blueprint seemed to show the staircase here.
On the left hand side of the building?
Yeah.
Looking at? It should be on the driveway side?
They are on the driveway side. So here's where it shows proposed stairs, but the architectural drawings show it about here.
Are we looking at the the correct ones for the is this the old drawing or the new?
This is a new drawing.
Sorry, I'm playing catch up here. Just one moment.
Yeah, that's the new one.
So I see proposed stair in the looks to be in the front on the side. So there's a driveway to the left. Let me see. I think these are the old. I think this is the old plot plan.
No, that's the new one.
This is the new one?
Yep, that's the new one because it's it's got the old the older ones got the the six parking spaces, as you said before.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
Now, this is the four parking spaces. But now comes the question, do you have proper egresses? You need to have two separate sets of egresses. Do you have that?
So there is one in the the front of the house and there's also one on the side. There's an existing egress in the front. I don't see it on this, but there is one currently there.
Yeah, there's a front stoop here, Mr. Chairman, that comes into the building. Then there's an interior staircase that takes you up to the second and third floor. This staircase here takes you to the first and second floor only. If if I can, I'm going to zoom in just a little bit because I just saw something that I did not notice earlier. I apologize. This is the stoop and staircase on the street and it appears that it is into the to the right of way.
Looks that way.
Okay.
Is that what was built about?
I, yes, I believe what I'm looking at right now, I believe that was existing, those two little stairs, but they're on the drawings. It appears that it is jutting out into the street, but it is not.
Well, according to.
Not into the street, it's into the right of way.
The right of way, Susan, yes.
Sidewalk, the sidewalk that walks through here.
Yeah.
If you show an area of view, you'll see that it's was just there when it was there before she bought the property. Right.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Well, your engineer is showing it. Your engineer is showing it in the right of way, so it probably is. So.
You may need to fix that so it comes up in here so that you don't have these two steps in the right of way because it's a trip hazard and reduces the amount of sidewalk.
Into the city street.
Correct.
So, Mr., I mean, Chief Williams, so that that third level, that that dormer upstairs does not need two egresses?
That's correct, as long as it's contiguous with the second floor apartment.
Okay, well, any other board members have any comments?
Our did the architectural plans don't match the plan?
The architectural plans do not match the site plan?
Is I thought that's what I heard you discussing. Because if so, then they need to match up.
Yeah, there's some tweaking that needs to be done if you were to grant her return.
Some proportions there?
Yeah, including the the front steps and stoop and the location of the new exterior staircase on the south side of the building needs to be adjusted so that it's in its actual spot.
Okay, that makes sense.
Are there any brother? Oh, I'm sorry. That's the chairman's job. Are there any board members have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I don't really have any questions, but I think based on what we just reviewed, it's probably a good idea to allow this to be continued because it looks like somebody's trying to improve a property that's it needs it. I mean, the the building department was calling for it to be torn down and the applicant is looking to move forward and not looking for zoning to change it to a three, but keep it as a two. It looks like a lot of work, but I I feel it. You know, to update the plans and continue and see what happens.
And I know we have to open this up for public hearing, but do we even have to continue it? Couldn't we consider just approving it to go back to zoning board with she understands about the site plans need to match for the front steps, the exterior staircase. She's going to be pulling permits to refurb the whole building. So our city inspectors, we have to trust that they're going to only approve the construction to be safe.
You can make those as conditions. But I think you should take public testimony first before we start.
I think so, too.
So anyone from the public, please raise your hand. I'll move you into the group. I know that Councilor Castro is here and would like to say something also. So if there's anybody from the attendees, please raise your hand. And while I'm waiting for that, Councilor Castro, please proceed. I don't see anybody from the public.
I think she's muted. Councilor Castro is muted, I think, Rob.
She is in the group. She can unmute herself.
I just unmuted myself, but I can't seem to I can't seem to video up myself. Not that you all want to see me necessarily. I don't know. My buttons aren't working. Story of my life. Well, in any event, good evening. My name is Susan Castro. I represent Ward Four. One Millet Street is located in Ward Four. And this is my fourth year representing Ward Four on the City Council. And in this whole time, and actually even before I was elected, this property has been a problem in this neighborhood. And I've got many calls about this property, homeless people living there. It was, you might not be a big essentially, no one live there. The city had to chase owners. And I could tell you there's been a succession of owners. I believe your applicant this evening is the third owner. Very interesting thing. This property would change hands and nothing would happen. And then within a year, there would be a foreclosure auction. Suddenly, it's worth a little bit more and it would again change hands in another year at a foreclosure auction. And I believe that is where Ms. Elves purchased it as well. I would love to see this property rehabbed, but it's not big enough for a three family. I was at the ZBA meeting. I was pleased when it was denied. I'm not sure it's big enough for a two family. It's just a teeny weeny little lot. Best I can tell from doing some research on it, it used to be combined with the property next door, which is about the same size as this. In fact, if you look at the assessor's map, the property next door, the house that improves, it seems to encroach on the boundary of the property you're discussing right now. I'm not sure there's been substantial changes made, but in my opinion, you have a more basic problem because, as Ms. Elves mentioned, this was a preexisting nonconforming use in this neighborhood. It's a C2. And by not being used as residential for more than two years, this property zoning reverted back to commercial. So this applicant needs to apply for a use variance in addition to applying to make a residential use. And I don't really see that spelled out in in your return to zoning application. I also I don't see the substantial changes that rise to the level of sending it back in in my opinion. So I'm very concerned about this and I wanted to give you my two cents. And I defer to what the board does this evening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else that wants to speak, Rob?
There is nobody else with their hand up. Giving it last call. And I do not see anyone else, sir.
Okay. I mean, that's a point well taken. You don't you don't even have enough area. Assuming that this was in a in an R2 zone, you don't have enough area for a two family. You know that, right?
I think it was not enough area for a three family is what I was told.
Enough area for two. You need 5,000 square feet for a two family. You've got 4336. You've got you've got a lot of issues. A lot. So I don't know.
I do. I did hear her. I did hear her mention, there is a house next door. It's identical to this property. So.
That's an existing nonconforming use that's not asking for any relief.
Right.
I mean, it's grandfathered. You're asking what you're asking to do is you're asking to to remake the building. The one that's next door isn't, so. I don't know. It's an interesting one. All of these end up being interesting problems.
Yeah, that's that gets interesting and confusing if she just wants to restore this two family instead of the three family. So if I could make a motion, are we ready? Make a motion to return to zoning with conditions to match up the site plans for the front steps, the exterior staircase, also the green space mentioned by zoning. I guess there wasn't enough green space. And if she's required to get a use variance, then add that. But that's just gets confusing to me.
Let me second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to to go to return back to the zoning board with with the conditions that have been stated. Let's see, what on the roll call? Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Did you comment?
Yes, yes.
Well, I gave this one a lot of thought. I don't want to be the spoiler. I think you've got a lot of issues there and I think you've got a big hill to climb. I'm going to give it a yes. My conscience tells me not to, but I'm going to give it a yes. You've got some things that you've got to address there. This is far from an ideal case. It's very problematic. But just reading the zoning board's decision, you've got things to overcome there. But in any case, good luck with it.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the board.
Good night.
Good night.
Mr. Chair, can we take like a two minute break?
That sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Does anybody want to see me walk on the ride on my exercise bicycle?
I figured we're taking a break.
That does, John, that doesn't mean you can't do it.
I've just gotten some comments from the peanut gallery on my, my, on my text messages. They want me to get on the bike.
I don't know how you're going to take that.
Exactly. Really?
Mr. Chairman, I believe this is the end of the first quarter of our agenda, so we have three quarters to go.
Three quarters? No, no, no.
It's a long night.
Yeah. Well, let's see, we're on, we've got number eight coming up. Right?
Yeah.
We've got number eight coming up. It is, I mean, it's a long agenda. It's 12 items. I mean, some have been continued and so forth, but.
Mr. Self is here. Oh, there he is.
Anybody else?
I'm moving Councilor Asak up.
That's who's raising their hand.
Yep.
Oh, wait a minute, Todd.
Todd has been moved up.
Hey, Bill. Hello, John. Good evening, board.
Bill, is there anybody else part of your presentation team?
Myself, John, and Todd Pilling will be joining. Todd's the engineer for the project.
Do you want Mr. Hebschi?
Hey, Todd.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I'll, I'll promote him. Just, just there we go.
Yeah.
Is the board all back? Two, three, four. Board is all back.
It's Freddie.
Hello, Fred and Fred. Hello.
Who's that?
It's John. Say hello.
Hi, John.
How you doing? How are you?
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, when you're ready.
All right. So this is agenda item number eight, definitive subdivision properties at NAP 37 plots 468 Augusta Avenue and plot 36 Prospect Street. I guess it's an 18, is it an 18 lot subdivision? Is that what it comes down to?
It's a 15. They're knocked down to 15.
All right. The owner, owner is Frederick Hebschi and the representative is, well, you've got a few representatives, Curly and Hanson and John McCluskey. So which one of you fine gentlemen is going to make an opening statement?
Brief statement.
Well, never being shy. I guess I will. My name is Attorney John McCluskey, representing Fred Hebschi, who has owned this property for many, many years. This is a subdivision that was recently approved preliminarily by the planning board. And under the new regulations, went to the zoning board of appeals for a variance, seeking approval of a 15 lot subdivision. Qualifying that slightly by saying that one of the lots already has a home on it, which was, is 100 Augusta Avenue, which is a former home of Fred and Estelle Hebschi and family. And then one of the lots is a, not a buildable lot as a detention area for drainage purposes. And leading into that, I will say that Bill Self has designed a subdivision that really takes into consideration all of the the drainage issues and the area issues. And we've gone over this for many, 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 many months. And this was a subdivision that was approved many years ago with much smaller lots. And I will say that when we met maybe a year or two ago to discuss what would be the most appropriate use of this property, taking into consideration the the desire of the city of Brockton to have lots with larger frontage and area space. This is what we came up with. So this was approved by the planning board on a preliminary basis. It went to the zoning board of appeals not long ago, back in oh, I don't know, a couple of months ago. And the, the decision was approved. There were no appeals taken. And we filed that decision with the registry deeds. And so here we are tonight, seeking final approval of the subdivision for, for 13 new buildable lots. One existing lot with a home on it. And from, from there, I would give it to Bill Self, who is, who's an expert in this area and will be able to guide us through this.
All right. Thank you, John. Just, and Bill, if I could, if you could just give us the, only because we've seen this before and I know that there's been a lot of fine tuning, so if you can just, just give us the shortened version, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I agree.
I talked too long.
No, 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 you didn't. Not at all. No, no, no. Relative to the length of our, of our, of our long agenda. Don't take it personally.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Bob. My name is Bill Self, Curly and Hanson, preparer of the plans. Just a little clarification. If, if, Rob, if I could, if we could just show the, the, the the plan, I believe it's we need sheet number four on the irregular subdivision.
Yeah, that's the one I'm looking at. That's, that gives you the best view. Gives you.
Yeah, I know. That's the, the plan that's up there now was not part of the subdivision, Bob. That was an additional sheet that was submitted that we had gone earlier back in 2018 to the conservation. You look at the title, the one I'm looking at. But if we could, if we could see sheet number four of the subdivision, I'd like to start with just a little, just a clarification of where we are. And then I'll get right into the major, you know, additions we've made through your review from the planning board.
Okay, let me get to four. There we go.
That's, that's the plan. Now, just if I could, if I could just, as a clarification, we had originally come in with an 18 lot subdivision and we'd listened to the some of the concerns. We had some neighborhood meetings. And we've done, you know, our homework as well as listen to all the abuddies and some of their, their objections and what we thought. We made the changes and, and we ended up with a, with a 15 lot submittal. Just a clarification. We went to the board of appeals. There are physically 13 buildable lots that we asked under the board of appeals. The, 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 the other two is if you looked at number 14, that is just a small lot. It's 4,347 square feet. That was a small parcel that as an agreement to the new owners of the existing lot number 100, there was a driveway there and we created just a small lot that was to be combined, to be conveyed to and combined with number 100. Number 100 was part, was a lot of the original 1965 subdivision. That's when the subdivision was approved last with the planning board. So that was, that was a lot, 14 was one lot. And the other lot that we, that we we showed on the plans was lot four. That lot four is a lot that was created entirely just to, you know, for the drainage purposes. There's a detention area there. And that basically takes all of our drainage from Cross Ave extension that, that you see going up towards the north. So that, that's what encompasses a 15 lots. When we met with the, both the neighborhood meeting and, and the board of appeals, the, most of the comments from the board of appeals were really, most of them were from the, the lots that are on the existing Augusta Ave. When, and their main concern, they're very small lots. Their main concerns were, you know, what type of a, you know, drainage flow was coming off the subdivision. They have, they had lots of, you know, wet during certain parts of the year. It actually grades from the west coming across down towards Augusta Ave. And what our resolution was, is that if we could go to, Rob, if we could go to five I think 5B, Rob, if you could bring that up for us, please. If you, if you see the, the lots we're talking about, or the lots down the bottom of the sheet, that existing houses that are on Augusta Ave, what we've done and we have, through the review of the city engineer and, and the concerns that those neighbors had is that we've designed the 30-foot drainage easement that comes all the way down along the backs of the lots. And we also, with some of the concerns, we've also shown as a revision that there'll be, there'll be a six-foot stockade fence constructed on the property of the development that'll go along those lots that, that border behind on Augusta Ave. So that's a couple of the considerations that we put in, certainly to get rid of any water problems that they have now from the water coming across. And we feel that that was a remedy to be able to resolve that. The drainage, it's just an earthswell will be loomed and seeded. It's just directed down towards a basin area and accessible from Augusta Ave. And again, and there's also a 10-foot wide road gravel drive around the detention area for access and for cleaning purposes. One other request that the, that even, we talked about at the preliminary hearing for the planning board was that the city engineer had requested that we have access from the cul-de-sac area. So what we have done as well, we added to the plan that we originally submitted and we added a 30-foot easement along the northerly property line. That's on the, on the northerly end, northerly side of lot seven. That's the one at the end of the cul-de-sac. And I believe, if you could call up sheet 5D, please, it gives a little bit more definition of that.
Oops, I'm going the wrong direction. I meant to this one.
Yeah, 5D, as in David. There you go. Yes, that's good. And you clearly see there that what we've, what we've done is put the 30-foot out of the 30-foot wide drainage with a 10-foot access gravel driveway. You know, again, on the log of the end of the lot seven from the cul-de-sac. So that, that would give the access for any cleaning that may in the future be needed to come in there. It's, it's a drainage easement that'll be, you know, that'll be controlled by the association of all the people buying the lots. Same as the lot, lot four, the drainage easement. So that was basically what we've done to, you know, to answer some of the concerns that came from those neighbors on those, on those five lots that, you know, again, existed on Augusta Ave. As far as, if you, we could go back to maybe sheet 5A, Rob. The access, the access comes in from Prospect Street. It's an existing ground, excuse me, it's an existing paved way from Prospect Street coming down Augusta until it turns out and heads out to Cross Ave, which heads out to Cross Street. That is now presently constructed. It was constructed back, I'm guessing probably in the early 70s when they were working the subdivision. That's as far as they got. So that roadway is, is in the ground. Their infrastructure is there, drainage, water, sewer. It's a main trunk line that goes from Prospect all the way down through Augusta right out to Earl. And that's part of what, that, that we've tied in a existing, the new services into. Just a couple of concerns that the, that the fire chief was involved in. The deputy chief was, his review was that he, he was looking for another hydrant or so. And, and we have, we pointed out, we have one that exists out in Prospect Street. There's one heading out on the Cross Ave extension, existing Cross Ave going out to Cross Street two, and we added two more additional hydrants that go down on the Cross Ave that fed down to the cul-de-sac. Cross Augusta Ave with out to Prospect Street. That'll be, that'll be altered slightly down near the intersection to provide for the new drainage structures that'll be put in there. The roadway will be completely improved out to Prospect Street. We have, we have put in sidewalks both sides. We understand that it's, we're asking for relief for undersized lots and, you know, certain other items. We feel it's only in the fairness to, to have this as good a subdivision as we could possibly have. So it gives the access to both houses, both streets. So there'll be sidewalks both side. One of the other recommendations, I believe, came from the plan of board under our preliminary was that we've also provided on the revised plans that you're looking at, 10-foot planting easements. And now they would be easements that will be on the existing lots themselves. They'll be used for planting of the trees. And that way, you know, they're not come down the, you know, 10, 15, 20 years. We're not having the, the tree roots digging up the sidewalks and things like that. So it gives the beautification. This, this tree is planted on, on all of the lots in that easement area. Those are basically, you know, the Uh, those are basically, you know, the, the improvements that we've, we've made, we've added to. Um, all the other issues we feel have been addressed from the initial review. And certainly if there's any questions from the board, we can, uh, we can follow and answer whatever questions we may have.
Um, I, I had, uh, thank you, Bill, I had one question. So what, what sheet shows topography? Uh, that covers lot number four, is that?
Uh, it's on the sheet, uh.
Five B?
Five. Yes, Bob, five B.
Five B, can you go into five B, Rob, and then just blow up lot number four? So I, I had a couple of questions, I know you, you probably had limited drainage solutions, it's kind of unfortunate that. That you had to, that you had to, well, for the lack of a better word, sacrifice lot number four. It's a beauty, especially if it's like a showcase lot when you come into the subdivision. From, uh. From, uh, Ross Street, right?
Yeah, cross ave, Bob.
Cross ave, I'm sorry, so my, my, my question is, uh. Again, that was, that's kind of a showcase lot that you've got there and it's a drainage, it's a detention basin. So my question is. Um, I know, I know fencing has fallen out of favor around detention basins and years ago, as we all know. These things all had these ugly fences around and thank God that's been done away with. So are there any plans, Bill, to, to vegetate this thing just to take the? I don't know, how would you say the, the, the unsightliness of a detention basin there?
Well, one, yeah, I'm, you know, and I'm sorry, Bob, yeah, what we, we have addressed it, what we feel. Uh, it's gonna be loomed and seeded, it's something that'll be mowed. It's not gonna be something, it's a detention area, there won't be water, you know, standing water in it once the rain. You know, storm events have, have passed. Uh, it'll be controlled by the association. Uh, it's similar to what we've done up on, uh, we did up on, uh, Noddy Way, Bob, up in Linwood Street.
Yes.
Uh, same basic principle and it's, it's, uh, you know, I've, I've checked on it periodically. And it's, it's been maintained, it's mowed, it's, 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 it's an asset, you know, it's a. You know, to, to the, to the lots that, you know, in this particular case, lot five, as well as the lots across the street.
Sure, my, yeah, my, my question, and I think, yeah, they generally, if they're maintained, they, but my question was. Could, is it possible that the developer would consider? And I see up above there, you got some spotted trees there. How about along the, how about along the way of, uh? What is that, on the, on the Augusta Ave side? Can you, can you get some plantings in there, Bill, so that when you come down the street, you, you don't see, just see the stackness of a detention basin?
Yeah, one, one of the things that if, if, uh, if, Rob, if you can just, if you could, you know, bring that up a little bit. One thing that, uh, that did come up, I believe, on the Board of Appeals was that. Right now, this all is, is, is all wooded, coming from Cross Ave that's existing, coming all the way. From Cross Ave all the way heading north down Augusta, it's, it's, it's actually wooded area right now, Bob. Uh, we had no intentions of disturbing it other than the ten-foot access driveway. To be able to come down just for the maintenance around the detention area.
Oh, I see, so that's, that's not gonna even be, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be an aesthetic, uh, you know, visual, uh, type of a thing. Uh, we can certainly, we can certainly install plantings. You know, up in the top along the gravel, in, you know, along the gravel. Uh, gravel driveway, right there, you can see it's a flat area.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sure if that's, if the beautification, we could add up, you know, five or six trees along that top part, that is not, that, that's no problem at all.
Okay, but then when you look at the, when you look at the top of lot four, I see your proposed plantings up there.
Yeah, again, that would be in within the ten-foot easement, so we keep it outside of the, outside of the limits of the street, the right of way. Uh, in a, in a way, you know, and backs of the sidewalks enough where we give the, give the trees a little bit more, more room to grow and. And, uh, and not, uh, be disruptive of the sidewalks.
All right, uh, thank you, and then I got one question for Todd, is Todd on?
Yes, I'm here.
Good evening, Todd, how are you?
Good evening, Bob.
Okay, so in a typical storm, just ballpark, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but Rob says I do that all the time. Um, so. In a typical storm. How deep will the water be in this basin and roughly given the rate of infiltration there? How long would it take the start, the basin to empty roughly? The depth in the, in the length of, in the rate of infiltration, how long would it be, what?
Yeah, uh, they all, the basin drains, I think it was in just over twenty-four hours, um, after a hundred-year event. Uh, which obviously is like a seven-inch rainstorm in twenty-four hours, which is a pretty big rainstorm. Uh, any event smaller than that is gonna be significantly less than twenty-four hours for it to drain. And as far as the depth of the water, we have a foot of freeboard built into this, uh, above the hundred-year event. So that puts the top of the water at, uh, I forget now, it's like two feet deep that we get in there of water. In a hundred-year storm.
Right, which is, which is a pretty major storm.
Yes.
So significantly less than that on, on an average storm. And again, as I said moments ago, I, I know that fencing around basins is, is, thank God, it's fallen out of favor because there's. Nothing uglier than the fencing with all the plastic bags stuck in the fence and everything. But i- is that, i- is that a concern? Uh, to have water in the basin? Have you found that to be in your experience there, is that a concern? To have, I mean, you've got families there, young children and so forth.
Yeah, well, this, the, this is not gonna be there in the wintertime, it's not gonna be ice. It's only gonna be during the rain event and then it's gonna drain afterwards, um, and. You know, usually in the rain, the kids are not playing in it, so it would be the sunny days that when this is mowed and nice, I see them down there playing baseball in it or wiffle ball or something like that.
I mean, but I mean, after a storm event, the, the storm goes away and now you've got several inches of water in the basin, that, that was my only concern.
Yeah, but again, it's dropping quickly, I, I didn't run any calc's on the smaller storms, I know in the seven-inch rainstorm, it was like twenty-four hours or something like that for it to drain, but, um. The smaller storms, I say, I, I didn't run it, but it, it won't be there for very long, because it's gonna go out through the bottom, it's gonna go out through the drainpipe on the end.
Um, yeah, okay.
It's not gonna stay.
So it's not a major issue?
No.
Um, board members, any of the board members have any other questions, comments or concerns? I mean, I, this is, this has been, uh. It's been refined and revised many times and, uh, so, um. And no board members have any comments or concerns, uh, Rob, you wanna open it up to the public?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you have any comments, please raise your hand. Um, attendees, if you will raise your hand and I will unmute you. And we have Counselor Asak, which would, who would like to address, uh, the group, and so we should. Out of deference, um, start with her.
Thank you, Rob, uh, good evening, Board, Shirley Asak, Ward Seven City Counselor. Um, as you just mentioned, Mr. Chairman, this has been before you numerous times. Um, so I'd just like to state again that I'm here in support of this project. Um, as mentioned, uh, we have had numerous community meetings with abutters and residents. Uh, residents' concerns have been addressed, as you see this evening, I mean, the number. Has changed significantly since the beginning of this project. Um, and I have not received any calls from residents that are in opposition of this projects and recently. So, um, with all the projects I've seen and have been involved in in the city of Brockton, I have to. Uh, say, I haven't seen anyone like Mr. Bill Self, Mr. Fred Hepshe, who have addressed. All of the residents' concerns and which is really impressive and. Trust me, I attend many of your meetings, I watch them and I attend zoning and watch them and. It's really, uh, nice to see that, you know, applicants are listening and they're trying to do what's best for the residents. With that being said, I hope that you vote favorable, favorably on this project this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um.
And again, Mr. Chair, there's nobody else with their hand up.
Okay, all right, we'll close that portion of the, the hearing, uh, is there any, any additional comments on the part of the planning department?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, well, I guess we're at that, at that moment, um. Would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes.
There are some, um. Standard conditions that. I just want to specify. Um, this subdivision and all subdivisions. Will require the homeowners association documents. The streets are to remain private and maintenance is, belongs to the homeowners association. Until the council accepts the street, the same with the streetlights, they belong to the homeowners association. Until the council accepts the street as public.
Okay.
Pam, I have a question, would you, uh, require some kind of a homeowners association agreement, uh, at some point?
Yes.
And when would that be?
Um. I believe the way it's phrased is before, um, you get a building permit.
Okay.
So the, the approval, the plans can be signed, they can be recorded, but.
That's fine, thank you, we'll, we'll take care of that.
Okay, so when, when we make, when we use the language, will we make? In creating a motion, Pam, can we just say with standard conditions or do we need to recite?
You can, those are going to be standard conditions. From now on, they were last month too, so.
Okay, so there's no other caveats that we need to be aware of. Having said that, would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve with standard conditions.
I'll second that.
So you got a motion to approve with standard conditions and a second. A vote on the roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes. So now comments on what, surety, I guess?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey, what, what would you imagine that your client would, what form of surety?
Well, I, I, I think that a covenant present time would be the, the appropriate thing to do. And, uh, I do know that there are some lots. At the entrance, uh, of the subdivision. That may be considered to be buildable at this point because of their construction of the roadway. And I, I will ask, is, are there any comments on that? On, on that comment, uh? Is the, is the, um.
You'd be looking for immediate release of those lots?
Well, there are, there is a, there's pavement that's already in place. And, and Bill Self may be able to, uh, resolve this for us. Uh, and I, and I might not need even a comment, but, uh, no, I, I think we, we, um, we would, uh, at this point. Agree to a covenant. And as, as time goes on, we would seek, uh, release of. Whatever lots might be appropriate, given the condition of the roadway.
Well, you're gonna cut, the thing is though, Bill, uh, John, you're gonna be cutting into the roadway. So, so that you'd need to. You'd need to bond, somehow bond the work in the road, either pay, either get the. Get your utilities off the road and then get your lot released, uh, or, 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 or post some sort of a bond for that.
Yeah, I understand that, 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 given the, given whatever the condition of the roadway and appropriateness is. Uh, in accordance with the planning board, uh, we would seek releases and, um. You know, it is what it is as far as, uh, what, what needs to be done as far as releases and or covenant, right?
Right, you can fine tune that going forward.
Right.
Yeah, if, if I could add to that, Bob, if you.
Go ahead, please.
Clarification, I think, I think what, uh, John was, uh, saying is right now, the existing Augusta Rav. That we're, uh, we're gonna improve the existing conditions, we'll be resurfacing it, things like that. Again, most of all, the infra-infrastructures in. I think what John was relating to is, is that we'd like to, uh, ask, uh, you know, certainly not at this meeting, but maybe your next meeting or whenever, once they're approved. Is there a way that we could come in while we're, while we're building the extension, which is a complete new buildout? And we'd like to be able to come in and maybe get just the lots that are on Augusta Rav, where they're already accessible. You know, the, the way there is, is adequate for any kind of access. And it'll also give the contractors something to be building with, you know, for this market while they're also constructing the, you know, the new roadway. Again, which would be out, you know, it'd be something that could be done. And, uh, that's what we're talking about as far as, you know, releases, the, whatever, whatever lots the planning board could release, I think there's five lots there.
That's correct, thank you, Bill.
Something that we could look at in a future, a future.
Well, you need to have, you know, the approval letter needs to go to, to be drafted, it needs to go downstairs, your. Your appeal period needs to run, the plan that's signed and go on, you're probably two months away, so.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, at a future meeting, we can.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Posh releases at a future meeting, but I, I, I understand the concept.
As long as the infrastructure is in for the lots. That's, so you couldn't release anything that doesn't have. Utilities or roadway.
Correct, thank you.
We'd just like, you know, we'll address, we'll, we'll get on your planning board agenda once it's, it's all approved, the, the appeal periods are over. And everything is in place. Thank you.
All right, so anything else as far as administrative on this, Pam?
Uh, no, I will be in touch with Attorney McCloskey when I need his client's signature.
Okay.
Thank you, Pam.
All right, I think we're good, thank you, gentlemen, good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate the board. It's been well worth the wait.
Yeah, well, it's been a long time.
Well, let's hope we get it right. Again, thank you very much, greatly appreciate it.
Okay. All right, let's move.
Quincy.
Yeah, I got Jim Morrissey.
Attorney Nazra, I will move over. And Chris.
I saw. Oh, okay, you got.
I've already moved some people over.
Okay. I think that's.
Now you're live.
Beautiful.
Glad you're here, Kristen.
You're my friend. Just so you know.
All right, so the next agenda item, are we ready to go, Mr. May?
We are ready, sir.
Next agenda item is a preliminary subdivision, the property is at forty-two Quincy Street. Uh, it was a five lot, now it's a four lot, they're returning. Uh, from last meeting and the owner representative is Spring, Springfield Ventures Realty Trust. Homegrown, good evening, gentlemen, can you put this up on the board, please, uh? Uh, Rob, the new plan. Or Scott, either one of you.
Oops, sorry, that's the wrong one.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the wrong one.
Uh, Quincy, where is it, there it is.
That's it.
All right, uh, good evening, Scott, if you wanna, uh.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, Scott Farrier from Homegrown Engineering, uh, Attorney Nazra is on screen somewhere, I hope.
That's what I thought.
There he is. Uh, well, the plan that we had before you was a, a revised plan from the preliminary that we had. At your last meeting, as you recall, it was a five lot. Uh, preliminary subdivision. We had, uh, a lot of back and forth with the planning board on some changes and, uh, concerns that you folks had. And I think with this revised plan, we've pretty much hit everything that was brought up and I, I think it was pretty much. At least one comment from, from each of you, so if I can just take a second, I can go over it. Then we can, uh, keep moving, Mr. Chairman, so, uh. The first comment we had was about what we'll call the estate lots. Uh, they had forty-five feet of frontage and the area was around thirty to forty thousand. Mr. Chairman, you had a comment that, uh, looking at other estate lots in neighboring towns, the area is usually double. Uh, we listened to your comment, we got rid of one of the estate lots, now we have lot one, which houses, uh, the existing house in Bonds. And lot three, uh, lot three has now sixty feet of frontage and sixty-one thousand square feet. 61,000 square feet, so we went from the 45 feet, which was of some concern with the engineering department, increased it to 60, went from about 37,000 to 60,000, so we've doubled the zoning as, as you mentioned. Lot one, the frontage stayed the same, it's right around 90 feet of frontage, we increased the area on that one to 77,000 square feet, so again, more than double what's required in zoning. The other two lots, lots two and four, we originally had about 90 feet of frontage, I believe, on each, and around 12,000 square feet, we've increased those to 115 feet of frontage, we're up to 17,000 square feet, and there was also a comment about pushing those, those houses back a little further off of Quincy Street, we've moved those back 15 feet, that was another board member comment. We also flipped the driveways, so the driveways before were all kind of jammed towards the middle of the property, on two and four, we've made them end loading on, on kind of the outside edge of the, of the lots to get a little more spacing between those three new driveways. The other significant change we made, there was some discussion about a buffer in the back for the lots, the existing lots on Debbie Road, so we've had a 50-foot wide, no clearing buffer in the back of lots one and three. I believe that is it, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, much improved, much improved, yep.
Mr. Morrissey spent a lot of time looking at it and tweaking it, sleepless nights, he said.
Yeah, well, I, I'm really, from my own perspective, I'm pleased that you, that you diminished this by one lot, because I kept the old plan and it was still, I was anticipating seeing what moving the driveways we're gonna do, but it was, to me, it was still overdeveloped, I thought, but much improved.
Thank you.
Board members, any other board members have any comments? Did they all fall asleep?
No.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Scott, the, the little dogleg turnaround seems kind of short in the estate lot, if you will, is it my imagination or?
No, it, yeah, to be honest with you, I don't know why we stopped drawing it there, chief, but it does continue all the way around to the existing bond, the existing driveway, it isn't quite as defined, what you, what we have right there is the, the vertical granite curbing that they have, the existing granite curbing that they have to outline the driveway, and the curbing ends, but the gravel driveway continues, I just, to be honest, we just forgot to continue drawing it, so I'll make sure we put that on the definitive plan.
I think, I think he's talking about the stub on lot three, I think, no?
Correct. See that little stub right there?
Oh, okay. Turnaround stub.
I'm sorry, yes.
Is that, is that short, or is it my imagination?
Should be.
It appears short.
Okay.
It should be about 20 feet, at least 20 feet long.
If you could just adjust that, that would be great.
Thank you, thank you for noticing.
Any other board members with comments? Okay, I only have, oh, wait a minute, can you put that, I'm sorry, can you put that back up again, please, Rob? I'm sorry, or Scott, whoever put it up?
No, moving to the next case.
Okay, wrong plan.
What?
Ah, do it again, sorry. Told you, moving to the next case. Sorry, um, there it is.
Okay, I think you've made some substantial changes, as I said, there's only one other question or request that I would have, you see the driveway configuration on lot number two?
Yes.
Is it possible to flip, to flip the driveway in the house on lot number two, so that you don't have two driveways coming out at the same place? Just, just imagine, if you flip the driveway on lot number two, the driveways on your project would be almost evenly spaced up and down the street.
A hundred percent.
Sure, can you, would you be able to do that?
Not a problem.
That's my only, that would be my only comment, so you don't have two driveways right next to each other.
Right, we'll take care of that.
Let's see, so this is a preliminary subdivision, this does not have public input. Any, so no comments on the part of the board, no comments on the part of the planning department? Very good. Well, let's move on, anybody, would someone like to make a motion?
The Ward Council, I think, wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, pardon me.
He's raising his real hand.
Pardon me, Councilor Thompson, good evening.
Nope, good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the planning board, my name's Jeffrey Thompson, I am the Ward Five City Councilor, I know it's been a long night, so I will be brief, I do support this modified plan at 42 Quincy Street, I do appreciate that Mr. Morrissey listened to the comments of this board and decided to scale back this project, by reducing this development from four houses instead of five, he is able to increase the frontage on lots two, three, and four, and although Brockton does not have an estate lot ordinance, the removal of the one estate lot house does allow for the existing estate lot to meet the standard ordinance of other towns, which is doubling the lot area and there's at least 60-foot of frontage, so I think that'll be a good addition there. The plan, the plan indicates that the developer will also maintain that 50-foot buffer on the back of the property, which abuts Debbie Street, so I know that screening would be appreciated by the butters. Now, and although I'm not seeking this to be a condition, Mr. Morrissey has stated that he is determined to engage in construction of this development during the summer months, so as not to adversely affect the school traffic come the fall, so I do support the building of high-end new construction in this area, and I do support this plan, and I, I ask that you recommend it favorably, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Councilor. Nobody else that you recognize that wishes to speak, Rob?
Ladies and gentlemen of the public, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand, so I can recognize you. And I have no hands raised, sir.
All right, hearing none, would the board, someone on the board like to make a motion?
Motion to approve preliminary subdivision 42 Quincy Street.
I'll second that with the change in the two driveways indicated by Mr. Chair.
All right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm catching up, wait a minute. Okay. Gotcha.
Vote on the roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Standing.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes, so we have a quorum, we have a, okay. So, congratulations, you're all set.
Thank you, folks.
Well, the parcel is said, they have to come back again for a definitive.
Well, they gotta go to the zoning board next.
Done for the night for them, please move on, thank you.
They don't miss.
Scott, are you done, is this your last?
No, Scott's still with us.
Number, well, number 10 is, is Fairview Avenue.
Okay. Yep, um, I have to move.
Burke, is that Mr. Self again, Bill Self?
Yeah.
He's a busy guy. Mr. Burke, is there anybody else on your team?
Bill Self, and I, I think that's gonna be it for the night.
And who is Dave Cruz?
Dave Cruz is a butter, and I think he'd probably like to speak at some point.
Okay, we will recognize him when it comes to the public time.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. May, with your permission?
Go ahead. Mr. Chairman, go.
Excuse me, Mr. Pelagi, with your permission. Jim Burke?
And I represent Chris Mathers, I've known Chris for many years, in fact, I knew his mom and dad, his dad, as most of you or many of you realize, was a very distinguished member of the bar in Plymouth County that lived in Brockton, was also a member of the judiciary, and Courtland and his wife owned that property at the 166 Fairview Avenue, an extremely attractive residence that also had, joining it, a tennis court, it's a very large parcel of land, it's roughly 3.5 acres, at one point in time, the rear of it was, was mowed for hay by a prior landowner, it is Chris's proposal and request with Bill's help to develop a plan that would allow the existing home to remain with roughly 91,000 square feet of land and 140 feet of frontage, and then have a buildable lot adjacent where the tennis court was, that again, would have 40,000 square feet of land, well in excess of our minimum lot requirement, but 100 square feet, by the division of the two parcels, it would also create a setback, side setback of roughly about six feet, I guess, from the existing lot to the new lot that's being created, so it is our hope that this board will allow us the opportunity to go to the zoning board of appeals and to create our argument before that board, to establish the hardship that I think that exists, to allow the development of the property, and it will, I think, be very much in harmony with the existing neighborhood, the frontage is somewhat consistent with the number of the lots on Fairview Avenue, which is long been thought of as one of our very distinguished streets in the city. Bill, I think technically, I'd like you to walk them through the existing condition and what we intend to do, and we'll go from there and answer questions.
Certainly, yeah, as Jim explained, the only, the only thing I wanted, just wanted to correct, is that on the existing dwelling 166, there is, along that property line, we will be asking through the Board of Appeals for a variance under the side yard setback for that, for that particular building, right at the very end, there's an old type of a work shed, stable area type of an effect, without having to cut it back three feet to make the sideline zone on that, that's really the only, you know, side setbacks that we'd be asking for a variance with. As you can see, the proposed dwelling would be a four-bedroom home, it's, it meets all the criteria for the setbacks, again, we're only looking for, really, in these, both these lots would be the variation under the frontage, waiver your frontage of 175 feet, down to 100 for the lot one, and 140 for the lot two, we feel that, you know, leaving the rest of the areas would be left intact, it basically wooded, pretty much an overgrown field out behind 166, as Jim recalled, and we feel that it would fit in with the neighborhood keeping the lot, so, you know, very close to the other types of sizing, certainly larger in area, but, you know, 100 feet, we figure would be adequate for a nice new home to go in there.
Is there any, is there any proposal or any thoughts about doing anything with that rear land in the future, Bill?
I, you know, it, the only, there was one change, Jim, Chris came into the board a few months back, and there was a request by one of the neighbors to have just a sliver, they were longtime neighbors coming off of Fairview, and, and it was an opportunity for them to, you know, the neighbors on that side, the plan was created and gave them those small parcels, just to give them a little bit more buffers in the rear areas, so certainly, but as far as your question, Bob, there was, as far as I know, and it hasn't been brought up in our conversations, that I think it's, it's intended to be left there, there's no other access to it, this is really the only lot that has the access towards the, towards the rear of the property, there's a small wetland area to the rear of lot one, pretty much, you know, would, would prevent anything from being built out there, so, you know, what you see, you know, being presented, as far as I know, is, is pretty much the way the lots will stand.
Okay. All right, very good, any other questions or comments on the part of the board?
So, I'm on a butter 154 Fairview Avenue, I spoke to Mr. Matthews, and he had mentioned that.
Counselor, I, I would recommend that since you're in a butter, that you should, direct a butter, you should recuse yourself.
So, I, sure, I'll do that, but I, he did say he would give up that existing right-of-way, and I forgot the terminology, I just wanted to see if the attorney had acknowledged, if he acknowledged that with the attorney.
Sure, let me, let me try to assist on the, on the right-of-way, as I said many, many, many years ago, the prior owner actually had a, a right-of-way that went from Rockland Street to this property, which allowed him access to the rear parcel that was, I believe, used for hay, as, as you can see from the various plans, and Bill Self and I had a number of discussions about this, the existing dwelling, say at 184, which is shown on the plan, you don't see the easement or the right-of-way, in fact, all the way down the line to Rockland Street, at various times in the past, when the property was conveyed, the, the rights to that right-of-way, in fact, have terminated, so it is virtually a useless right-of-way, which I think that if we took the time and expense to do a judicial action, we could in fact get it removed from the plan, but that's for another day and another discussion, so essentially, we already, it's our opinion that the right-of-way is, is been abandoned as an existing condition, and it's not our intention to use it in the future, Bill, does that work for you?
Yeah, I, during our conversation, it was really, it was a right-of-way reserve for that particular back property of lot two, way back when, when the subdivision, I think it first appeared on the, the plan of the subdivision back in the 20s, 28, I think, as of the 1930, right now, there's actually no reason for, you know, it's rights of, of the owner of that lot two to pass over, which would be the, you know, the property of 154, and certainly if this is, certainly Jim, as mentioned, could, it could be looked into and, and, you know, he could release his rights, and that would pretty much put an end to that, but legally, it would have to be done, and that could be done at a later time.
But to answer the question, I believe the current owner of 166 has no problem releasing rights to the easement because of right-of-way, because it's, in our opinion, already been abandoned.
And so the owner, just to be clear, the owner of, the owner of House number 138 has no rights in that, in that right-of-way?
Where is 138, Bob, I apologize, no, no, absolutely not.
Okay, there's not?
No, they do not.
Okay. All right, any other questions? On the part of the board, any other comments on the part of the planning department?
We did receive a letter from Council Cruz, he was unable to be here, but he wanted to be on record in support.
Okay, very good, well, I guess hearing no other comments.
Well, there's somebody who wants to, there's a couple of people with their hands up.
All right, Rob, can you?
David Cruz, I'm going to unmute.
No, I moved him.
Oh, you moved them, and then PN, I don't know who that is, and PN was gonna have to identify themselves.
Philip Nazrela?
He's in here.
He's opposed?
I don't, no, I'm not opposed, I just had a question when I, and I was only watching this, because I. because I live off of Rock Meadow. But when you mentioned the 184, I have been led to believe I have a deed that goes into what used to be Dr. Jones's bond, the red bond. That was the easement coming off Fairview Avenue to that 184, because I got the tax bill that says 184 Fairview Avenue.
Okay, so your question, Attorney Nazarella, is specifically...
Well, I think that 184 relates to the property that I own, which is formerly, it's a red bond there, and it's a separate lot from my residence on Rock Meadow, and it's somewhere between Rock Meadow and Fairview Avenue. It's always been, it's been denoted as 184 Rear. And I think that's what that easement relates to. I'd be happy to show it to Attorney Burke, and, you know, I never thought much of it because I don't exit or egress on Fairview Avenue. But nonetheless, there is a document that relates to 184 showing that easement going into that red bond area. And I think Attorney Burke's probably familiar with the property I'm alluding to.
Actually, I'm kind of lost, so I'm not clear at all.
Right behind Judge Mathers' home is the big corral, that lot of land, and on it, there is a, joining it, is another freestanding building. It was a barn for his horses. Dr. Jones and Judge Mathers had horses there. I own that now, and the deed to it talks about 184 Rear. There it is, right there.
Okay, it doesn't seem to touch in any way on the right-of-way that we were just talking about.
Well, my comment is more of a question. I'm not...
Oh, yeah, okay.
And I'm not sure. I just heard 184, and it dawned on me, that's the tax bill I get, but I'm not... And I have no position in this either way as well. I'm just raising it as more of an inquiry.
Would it help, would it help if we brought that sheet back up again, Rob, showing the subdivision? Because if you go to the left side, on the left side of that sheet, it shows, clearly shows House Number 184.
Yeah, this house right here is 184.
No, that's 154, Rob.
Yep.
Yeah, it, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, yeah, it's way down.
Can you bring that sheet up again, please?
Hang on.
184 is west of the, keep going west. There it is. Is that what you're talking about, Bill?
Well, these, 184, those two lots were created by plan, by Hayward and Boynton, geez, and sometime in the 80s. I don't ever remember seeing any right-of-way that connected these properties to the properties further to the south, which would be under Lila Nazarella and Phil Nazarella. I see it is labeled 184 Fairview. But the only right-of-way by plan that's ever been shown is that right-of-way, again, in the original subdivision of, off of Rockland Street, and it went straight out. I personally haven't seen any plans on record referring to it. Doesn't mean that there's not another, you know, an older deed for some kind of access to that. But my deeds, you know, the deeds for our property doesn't refer to anything other than that right-of-way, and it distinctly call for, you know, the one that's going all the way up to Rockland.
Well, to move the issue, we're more than happy to talk with Phil off-record and just go over with Bill Self and look at what he has and compare. But I just don't see it relates to the specific issue before you now, Mr....
No, it does not.
No, I think that would be an appropriate solution.
Yeah, and I'm happy to do that. I wasn't trying to interrupt the proceeding. I only heard 184, and I thought it might be more than coincidental. And so when you effectuate what you're doing, it doesn't cloud your title at all by having that. So I'll be happy to share with you my documents, and if it's not related at all, so be it.
Anyone else that wishes to comment, Rob, that you can see?
I think Dave Cruz.
Dave Cruz would like to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Cruz.
Dave, you need to unmute yourself.
How's that? Is that better?
Yes.
All right, very good. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Thank you for your time. I've been involved with the Mathers maybe as long as Mr. Burke. And one thing I want, I'm sure Mr. Burke will remember, Courtland, one of the greatest things he did is he volunteered to be city solicitor under the unit's administration for a dollar a year, $1 a year, and I don't think Jack ever paid him. I want to applaud the Mathers family, because they've been working on this for a while. And, you know, Chris has a big family, and you know how that can get with the pressure from all. But they, I think, have presented a modest development of the land as compared to a recent proposal up in this neighborhood where they tried to put 10 gallons of material in a five-gallon bucket. And in this case, the Mathers family actually owns the land that they're trying to develop. So in the essence of time, I'll tell you no more stories, but I will request that the board vote in favor of this, and I'm sure you'll do the right thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank board members for your hard work, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Same to you. Anyone else which is to be recognized, Rob?
I do not see anybody else with their hands up, sir.
All right, thank you. So hearing no others, no one is recognized, would someone care to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Approve the preliminary subdivision.
Motion to approve preliminary subdivision 166 Fairview Ave.
I'll second that.
Okay, vote on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
I recuse myself due to being a butter.
Yes, you need to do that. I'm sorry, pardon me. So Larry was a yes. Reggie?
Yes.
And Bob Pelagi is a yes. So...
Thank the board for its time.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Scott, who else is promoting or presenting with you?
I should have, I believe, Attorney Andy Resovitz.
Thank you.
And Everett Murray is the applicant. He may be there as well.
Yeah, I put him, where did he go?
I got him.
Well, I thought I had moved him.
Marko Murray.
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening. So who is the spokesperson, please? Would it be Attorney Resovitz?
I believe Scott was going to handle it. I will definitely jump in if needed, but...
Take it away.
All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Scott Farrier from Home Green Engineering, representing Hyacinth and Everett Realty Associates. What we have before you is a preliminary subdivision off of Waverly Park Ave. Just before Waverly Park Ave goes into Petersen Ave. And it's about a five-acre piece of property. And what we're hoping to do is to develop the property into seven residential lots. Now, the main reason we're here before you with the preliminary subdivision is we need permission to proceed to the Board of Appeals. The lots would need relief either from frontage or area. The lots are, you know, they're pretty good size. They're right around 22,000 to 25,000 square feet. They all have a little more than 125 feet of frontage, so we're not too far off on the zoning issue as far as that goes. The biggest issue we have, and we might as well get it out there to talk about, Mr. Chairman, and I know it's come up recently in other subdivisions, our property, the access out to Waverly Park Ave is a separate plot of land, Plot 207, that is a 40-foot-wide strip of land. Now, the parent piece of property was owned by a gentleman named Cisco back in the 50s. And Mr. Cisco divided the property at nine Waverly Park Ave, 15 Waverly Park Ave, the 40-foot-wide strip, and 27 Waverly Park Ave. So he submitted an A&R plan to the planning board back in 1957 that created the three lots and the fourth lot being this 40-foot right-of-way. Now, it's our feeling on this situation. He owned the backland as well, even though it doesn't state in the 1957 recorded plan that the land was to be a future roadway. He left, he created the roundings at the entrances. And at the time, a 40-foot road opening was what was required by the city and was kind of standard at the time. So we feel like it was certainly his intention, again, where he owned the backland. He divided the properties on either side of that strip that is now Plot 207. It was his intention at the time, when he brought it before the planning board, to create that 40-foot lot to give access to the backland for a future subdivision. Again, it doesn't say that, but certainly, if that wasn't the intention, he would have divided that 40 feet, that 40-foot strip, and given 20 feet to the guy on the left and 20 feet to the guy on the right. He also would not have created those roundings at the property line, which obviously, you know, symbolized a roadway entrance. So it's our intention, as we proceed along the approval process, to ask for a waiver from your 50-foot right-of-way width for that 120-foot stretch of our roadway. Once we get beyond those abutting lots, we then widen out to the 50-foot that you folks require. But we would need a waiver from that 50-foot down to the existing 40-foot strip that is there. In doing so, we can still meet your roadway width. We still have the 34 feet of paving width. And really, at that point, we feel like the road kind of meets your requirements that are set forth in the subdivision rules and regs, that it's protecting the safety and convenience of the inhabitants. All lots in the subdivision have safe and convenient access to their lots. We don't really see where that 40-foot opening, as opposed to the 50-foot for that 120-feet stretch, really causes any kind of a safety issue.
Okay.
And I do have, if you wanted to see it, I do have that 1957 plan. I don't think I submitted it as part of the preliminary, but if Rob doesn't have it, if you wanted to give me the clicker, I could call that up to show it to you if you wanted to see it.
So it was that 120-foot strip was created in 57?
1957. It was signed by the planning board on, looks like, November 6, 1957.
You can pull it up if you'd like.
All right, thank you, sir.
Well, you were correct, Scott, in suggesting that that 120-foot by 40-foot wide strip would be the issue of contention, or at least it is in my mind, because... I mean, there's a lot of things. First of all, if I may, there's... You know, in doing a new subdivision, the planning board, any planning board has the obligation to ensure, you know, convenience, safety, access. I mean, those are things that are commensurate with any subdivision in any community.
Right.
And so we may be lacking, out of the gate here, I'm lacking a little information. For example, Waverly Park Avenue, the existing, I don't know what the width of Waverly Park Avenue is, the condition of the paving, Waverly Park Avenue is out to the major thoroughfare, which would be Plain Street. I assume that that 120-foot-long strip is unimproved, right?
Right, exactly. Yes.
So, I mean, there's a lot of questions that have got to be answered here. You're showing a fully conforming 50-foot-wide layout with sidewalks on both sides, and then they just come to a screeching, stubbing halt. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's not a unique challenge, but it is a challenge. I mean, it does bring pressure to bear on the obligations of what any board has to consider under the guidelines or under the guidance of the subdivision control.
And I think, as you know, Mr. Pelagi, the, all of the subdivision rules and regs, all of the state zoning, by what, nothing really speaks to any kind of grandfathered rights you would have as far as subdivision rules and regs. Everything speaks about zoning and your protection from an A&R plan. There's really nothing that you can point to about subdivision regs, roadway widths, any kind of construction standard. So it is, it is a unique situation. But as I said, I think if you look at that plan, the intention obviously was to have it be a roadway where Mr. Cisco owned the front and the rear property. So I think it's clear that that was his intention. I don't know if he intended it to hang around for 65 years, but I think it, I think it, I think it's clear that was his intention. As far as a sidewalk, I do understand what you're saying there. We have 34 feet of paving. In the past, we've asked for waivers on paving width. If we reduce the paving down to a, you know, a more common 28 feet, then it would certainly give us enough room to have a sidewalk go out to Waverly.
Yeah, if you got relief from paving, that would help the situation out now. As it's, you're showing 34 feet wide of paving all the way out to Waverly Park Ave.
Exactly.
Okay, now, I mean, we don't have any topography. Hopefully, you don't have any grading changes in there. You've only got, you've only got three feet to dispel any grading differences.
Scott, all we're seeing is your email box. I'm seeing your drawing.
Anyway, I'm sorry about that, Rob.
The Waverly layout is 40 feet.
Does that do it, Rob?
Waverly Park Avenue, the way he's got it drawn here, is 50 feet.
I was just on the city's GIS page, and it shows it at 40 feet, but I can't see his...
That's a big difference there, Scott. I mean, I don't, not to be overly critical, but you've got, if you, if you look at, if you look at the requirements, the plan requirements for a properly, properly prepared preliminary subdivision plan, you've got some deficiencies here. Is Waverly Park Avenue a 40-foot-wide width?
Yes, sir.
I threw a scale on this. This is showing 50 feet.
Yes, but if you were to go to the city's zoning page, or not zoning page, excuse me, the GIS, let me pull that up, because I have that right here. Do a measure from one side to the other.
Are you showing 50 feet of paving and you're showing, you're showing about, actually, you're showing 32 feet? I'd be surprised. You're showing 32 feet of paving, 50 feet, and a 50-foot-wide width.
According to the GIS, it's only 40 feet wide.
That's a big difference. So now, what you've got, Scott, instead of having 120 feet of deficient roadway, you've got whatever that scales out to be to the major thoroughfare. But those are my just, my opening comments. Does the board have any other comments or that they'd like to share?
I'm going to bring the plan back up again. I would like to point out, and we... Um, I would like to point out, and, and we put this in our memo that we shared with you all, um, that, um, in the last year, we've had two other applicants come forward with, um, frontages or with, with road width that were, um, not to the city's fifty foot layout standard. And you have, um, required both of those to come back as conforming. One did, one has not yet. Um, so I don't know if, uh, that is going to set a bad precedent. Um, but that is something that you need to take into consideration.
Any other board members have any comments?
Mr. Chair, I don't really have any other comments. I, I think it's already been discussed. I, I think that right of way in now the discovery of the width of Waverly Park Ave is it's, it's gonna cause a lot of problems. Unfortunately, that property out in the back two lots there supports the plan, but that right of way is gonna be a problem.
I mean, I'm, I'm certainly understand that, but as far as the condition of existing Waverly Park Ave, there isn't, uh, there isn't much we can do about that, I don't believe.
No, but your, your original claim was that you only had a hundred and twenty feet of, of deficient roadway to deal with.
Right, I'm, I'm, right, I'm talking the property line. The, the roadway layout would be a hundred and twenty feet, not the paving, but.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Scott, Scott, just have a question too. Um, and it, it, I'm just looking at it now. It doesn't make sense. You can't get access through lot two going all the way down Waverly Park Ave, right?
No.
I think so.
No.
Property was all separated up by, on an A and R and then the church has been selling off portions of it as they go along.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard on this matter?
Yes, please, sir. Yeah.
Thank you. So I don't know if we're able to take a look at the nineteen fifty seven plan. I, I have it on my computer and I don't know if I can share it with you or if Scott can do that.
I tried.
The nineteen, uh,
If you can share it, please go ahead.
Well, I have done this before. I will try it. I will try my best. Um, and let's see here.
There we go.
I'm gonna try to make it bigger. Okay, uh, maybe a little smaller, actually. Can everybody see this plan?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this plan was, a- as we've heard, this plan was, uh, created and approved by the Brockton Planning Board in nineteen fifty seven. And as we've also heard Scott say, it was clearly intended by not just the owner, but the planning board to be a roadway. And that's why it has, of course, the radiuses at the end of the street where it says forty one feet, forty, forty point one two feet. Um, so I think it's already been approved and I, and I understand that there isn't a grandfathered uh, guarantee, but it has been approved by, by the city. And, uh, it was access to these remaining properties.
Well, the, well, to be a clarification, attorney, the, the, the plan was approved, but that parcel C was never designated as a roadway.
I see that. I see that. I mean,
Say that it's a roadway, but it's not a roadway.
It's true that it doesn't say that. And I don't know what was on the plans in nineteen fifty seven, but I do know that because of the radiuses, it was intended to be at least preserved as a roadway.
Uh, attorney, uh, Andrew, could you, is, is it possible for you to scoop the drawing up a little bit so we can see? Because it says Brockton Planning something at the bottom and, and we're trying to see if that was. And it's hard to tell if that.
I think what it, that, that's, that's an A and R plan anyway. The planning board did not see that, I don't think. Lester Oderkirk endorsed that plan, a full amount of the subdivision control law not required.
Right.
So that was an A and R plan. The planning board never saw that plan.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of.
Well, in any case, I would, I also like to point out that if the width of the roadway of Waverly Park roadway is forty feet or thirty five feet, and this roadway is forty feet, it, you know, you're gonna have consistency there. It's gonna be consistent width of the existing roadway. And I wanted to point that out to see if that made any difference to you. Uh, it's not as if it would be a much narrower roadway coming off of Waverly Park. It would be the same. In fact, it would have sidewalks if required, of course.
Yeah, there, there, to my knowledge, and again, w- we're, we're suffering from the lack of information on this preliminary plan as far as what exists on Waverly Park. So we don't know the width of the paving, uh, we don't know what improvements have been made. But again, the planning board's charge is to make sure that there is, you know, there's a safety factor, a convenience factor, an access factor, all the way out to, in my opinion, that's my opinion.
And I, right, I would suggest there would be, if we look, if we go look back at the submitted subdivision plan. I mean, there's certainly full access and safety provided by the, the roadway, which is forty feet long for a hundred and twenty feet and then fifty, excuse me, wide, and then fifty feet wide with sidewalks. So safety, convenience, I think it's all there. I think it's consistent with the purpose and the intent of the subdivision, subdivision control law. I don't, I don't really see how you can say it is not. Um, and, you know, I think developing this land would certainly be in the public interest. This, this, um, neighborhood would be arguably improved by the development of this land in this way.
All right. I appreciate that. Is, any other board members have any comments? At this time, Mr. May, do you recognize anybody else that would like to be, like to speak or like to be recognized? Did you see councillor on the call?
Councillor Nicaestro is on board, um, and available to speak. And then we have three attendees left. If they would like to speak, please raise your hand. Or raise your hand.
Or use the Q and A function. Attendees speak first.
Um, I'm, I'm not seeing any of the attendees raise their hands. So Jackie, Kim, Louis, if you would like to speak, please indicate so. And there's no indication.
M- m- Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Would it, uh, are you looking for some, I, I've heard you say you'd need more information on Waverly Park. Would it assist you if we were able to, or if we, uh, created a more detailed plan with those, uh, the, with the width and the location of the existing Waverly Park Avenue? Is that something that would assist us in reaching, uh, a determination that this might be possible?
I mean, more information is better than less. Um, if you did do that, it would be, there's no guarantee, of course, but I, I'm, um, again, it's more information is better than less, but, um, I mean, we've already, you know, we've already discovered that the, that the plan shows graphically and that, that, uh, uh, an erroneous width of the existing way there, which doesn't help the situation. Um, and I don't have any detail on the, on the street that you're spilling out onto. So, I mean, I think the preliminary plan requirements asked for, I mean, a whole host of things. I mean, you know, some of them can be eliminated for discussion purposes because that's what a preliminary plan is. But there's a lot of key things on the, on that laundry list of requirements that make up a preliminary plan that are missing. Uh, having said that, uh, councillor Nicaestro, would you like to be recognized at this time?
Yes, yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
How's my bandwidth?
So far, so good.
Good, good. I'll speak quickly. Susan Nicaestro, Ward Four, City Councillor. This property is located in Ward Four, right on the very edge of Ward Four and the City of Brockton. Okay, I'm looking at a nineteen fifty seven approval not required plan. Okay, it's not a subdivision plan, it's an A and R plan. Um, lot C shown on that plan, we're calling it, you're calling it a roadway and I understand why. It just as easily was a driveway because we know that in real life, the land behind it, which is the subject of this evening's meeting, was a field for many years. It was the Sons of Italy field and, and I know many people who enjoyed happy times with their families there. So a driveway has different requirements and, and, uh, there's different concerns with that than a roadway into a seven lot subdivision. Um, and, and of course, as the city councillor, I've received about eight calls and several emails about this proposed project, mostly because of the ZBA notices that went out to abutters. Everyone is concerned because Waverly Park Avenue is acknowledged to be narrow and they have to park their cars. Um, and even parking cars on one side of the road make it narrow. And they wonder about how will cars make a swing out of this, um, lot C? If need be. Um, I, I'm concerned about the people who would live here in the future. I'm concerned that you wouldn't have sidewalks on that roadway, on that lot C on either side or even on one side and that that would, um, make children, it be endangered. Um, I'm concerned about the families that live on Waverly Park Avenue. I, you know, I understand there aren't a lot of pieces of, of, of just under five acres land in the city right now that are ripe for development. I'm just not sure. Um, my first concern is for the people who already live there and their ability to, to, uh, pass safely and, and have, and walk safely. So I have real concerns about this. I'm sorry to say it.
Thank you. I had one question.
Uh, if I could quickly, I, I'd like to apologize. I forgot to mute, um, a second ago. And, uh, my blowing my nose was not a comment on, uh, the councillor's testimony.
Well, that was you. Thank you for clarifying that.
I'm so sorry.
Rob, we thank you for your honesty. So, uh, attorney, um, Resivitz, did you, did you do a title on this?
I did. I don't necessarily have that at my fingertips, but please.
Just can you ballpark, when did Mr. Cisco take title? I mean, obviously he did this, he did this division, uh, through, through an A and R in fifty seven. When did he take title to this property roughly?
I'm not sure I have that information. Um, let's see.
If, if you, I don't mean to.
And I do want to say that Pam and I will check the files tomorrow to see if we can find the rules and regulations of the planning board at that time. Um, and, and see if there's any clarification so we can draw from that.
Clarification on what, Rob?
On roadway width.
I can tell you what it is. I can tell you because it, because the, because the, the, the last zoning change was when, was when all the capital properties were being developed. All of those properties, as tiny as those lots were, those are fifty foot wide ways. And all of those, I worked on all of them. They're all, they're all, they were done in the sixties. So if this, if Mr. Cisco took title to this, that's what I'm trying to ballpark.
It was nineteen fifty three, Mr. Chairman, October ninth, nineteen fifty three.
So you've got, you've got, you've got a deed into Cisco in nineteen fifty three?
Yep.
Okay, so he had, I mean, for whatever, for whatever it means, Mr. Cisco had, even though the, the conditions at the time or the regulations, roadway width regulations at the time were forty, he clearly had, uh, you know, roughly seven years to develop this land utilizing lot C as, as a, as a roadway. So it isn't as if he didn't have a window of time to develop, you know, this backland. Maybe it didn't, I mean, economically, it didn't. Maybe it wasn't the time to do it, but he certainly had the, the window of time to do it. Um, I, 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 you know, it, it's, yeah, things change, zoning changes, uh, regulations change, standards change. These, these are, as Scott said in his open, these are always a problem. They're just a problem. So, I mean, from the owner's perspective, the owner has, has a strip of land that he feels as though he, he is entitled to use. And, and, uh, from the, from the, from, from any planning board's perspective, you've got, you've got to, you've got to make decisions and choices that, that respect, again, convenience, um, safety and, uh, and access. And that's what a subdivision, any, that's stated in the subdivision control law. So, I mean, again, we've got lack of information here. I don't know. Board members, are you still awake?
I'm with you. I'm with, I'm here with you.
I'm wide awake. Yeah.
Now, Rob, do you think, you think in these, going forward in these longer meetings that we should send strong brewed coffee to all the board members if it reaches over two hours?
I think that would be wonderful, sir.
All right.
Is, is there any more public testimony? Are we done with that?
I have the mics open, so anybody could.
Well, this is, this is a preliminary plan, so we're being kind, but there is no, this is not a public hearing because it's a preliminary, a preliminary plan is no more than this, as a discussion tool, uh, which is what we're doing. Um, I don't know. I, I'll, I can only speak for me. I, these are, these are always a problem, uh, for a lot of reasons. One reason is making, making, making a design or an engineering transition from the fifty to the forty. I mean, the fifty foot layout, even if you wave things, and I'm not saying that, I'm not speaking for the board and saying that they're going to. But, but there's, there's physical features to a fifty foot road that can't be accommodated in a forty foot road. And, um, then comes the, then comes the, well, I mean, what, what is it? I mean, it just goes on and on. What, what is, what is a practical? You've got, you've got two, you've got two fully conforming sidewalks that will be five foot each that come to a screeching halt behind lot B and lot D because, because there isn't room to accommodate them. And then, as I said, you've got, hopefully, there's not many, when you're doing the, developing the road, you've got, hopefully, there's not much of a grade change, uh, because you've only got three feet of horizontal distance on either side of the paving of lot C if you stayed with your suggested thirty four feet of paving. So there's a lot of challenges to this. I mean, does, does, does reducing the density of what you're trying to do help? I mean, there's a lot of ways that we could, uh, that we could look at this thing, but.
So does the applicant want to continue this and try to meet what's required for the right of way?
Well, they, they can't. The fact is that they can't. I mean, all they can do, um, for clarification, I appreciate the suggestion, Tony, but all they can do is, uh, improve the, uh, with no guarantees, maybe they could improve the preliminary plan, but.
Mr. Chairman, is the number of lots, as you just mentioned, is that something lowering the impact of the use? Is that something that would?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't want to be on the, I want to be in a position where I'm telling the applicant what to do, but, I mean, less is better than more, I guess. But I mean, I don't, again, there, there's a lot of different moving paths that, uh, to this thing.
Um, I, I would like an opportunity to come back, uh, maybe with a more detailed plan and maybe we can find a way to make it work. Maybe we can't, but I think that since there's some unanswered questions, perhaps that would assist us.
Uh, all right, suggestion made on the part of the, the applicant to, uh, continue and revise. Let's see, this is a preliminary. Uh, so what would that require, Pam? Would have to ask for a continuance?
Um, they would have to ask for a continuance and we will need to get them to sign the waiver freezing the time for approval. If not, then you will have to vote tonight on what is before you. on what is before you.
Are they out of time right now? Because they could never stretch
It's a short time window for
Preliminary.
That's the problem with a preliminary. You get one meeting. That's it.
45 days. Yeah, so we have to, Attorney Resovitz should have to ask for a continuance, otherwise we'd have to vote on it tonight, please.
I think we'd like to request the continuance.
Are you agreeing to freeze the time clock?
Yes.
That's the most important thing.
Okay.
All right. Well, that's where we are. Would someone like to make a motion, then?
So we're looking at motion to continue. Is there a date we have to include?
Going to the next meeting?
Next meeting, which is March
Second.
March 2nd.
Motion to continue to March 2nd?
Second up.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue. A vote on the roll call. Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez?
Yes.
Reggie Thomas?
Yes.
And Bob Palagi is a yes.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Attorney Resovitz, do you want that? Do you want me to send that to you, or just Scott make a difference?
That would be fine, Scott. Is that okay with you?
Sure, that's fine.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Do we have anything else, Pam?
No, we do not. You have a pretty full agenda for next month already.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
The second?
Second.
Have a good evening, John.
Good evening.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you to everybody for your time.